Okay.
Okay, good morning. Today is November 1st, and this is a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors here in Ventura County, and we'd like to welcome you to your boardroom. At this time, if we could please, clerk, have a roll call.
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Plann. And Supervisor Long.
Present. Thank you. Now, if we could all rise for a moment of affirmation, and then followed by the pledge. I'd like to start the affirmation with some thoughts, and this is a saying from the Buddha: "The thought manifests as the word; the word manifests as the deed. The deed develops into habit, and habit hardens into character. So watch the thought and its ways with care, and let it spring from love born out of concern for all beings." Today may we serve in the best interest of all of the residents of Ventura County. Supervisor Michael, would you please respond?
With my pleasure and honor, hand over heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, held to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
There's a motion, a second, to accept the minutes from our meeting of October 25th, seeing no objection to that, so ordered. Next, we'll have our agenda review. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, there are three adjustments to your agenda. Consent item number 15 and 17 indicated that there were attachments. Those attachments were not in the agenda when it went out, but you have received them in the meantime. Item number 33, the first sentence, the word "from" should read "for" in the examination of the transfer of leases.
And that's the changes on the agenda review?
Right, those are all of them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to request that item 32, that we postpone that. I'd like to not hear that today, I'm not ready on that item.
Okay.
And so I'd like to just pull that off and give us, give me a couple of weeks, and not necessarily time, sir, just enough time to take a look at this, and I'll get back to CEO with regard to that.
Item 32.
And then my other question, my other request is that item 33, I think it would be appropriate that we hear that right after we hear item 26, which is the Harvard Department, because at that point in time, we'll have the Harvard Department personnel here, and the two items are related, so I think it'd be appropriate for us to do item 33 right after item 26.
Okay.
So those are my two requests, in addition to Mr. Johnson's.
Any other comments on agenda review request?
I'd move the agenda as modified.
It's motion, a second, as modified, any objections? Hearing none, so ordered. Yeah, I don't think that's an objection. That's a happy one. Consent agenda items 10 through 19 before the Board.
Move approval is amended.
There's a motion and a second, hearing no objection, so ordered. At this time, we'll move to public comment, and it's an opportunity for folks in our community to speak to the Board on items not appearing on the agenda. And the first card submitted, Ken Roberts. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Ken Roberts, I live in Thousand Oaks, California. My request this morning is very simple to the Board, I would like to have you direct the staff to do some research and determine methods to do pay differential for your employees that are called up into active duty and to the reserves. My comments and examples will be of a personal nature this morning. My son is an engineer at Station 34. His activation period was 545 days, that's a year and a half. Your current pay differential is for a 90-day period. Now, I realize that, and have heard the arguments, that citizen soldiers, the reserves, the National Guard should expect to be activated, but there's been a significant change in their roles and responsibilities the last several years. Previously, activation periods used to be for 90 days. I mean, if my son was down in Louisiana, or Mississippi, or Florida, helping get things straightened out, you know, would be for a shorter period of time. He's been over in Iraq since January, he's due to get out in January, and I think that you should recognize and realize the hardship that these long-term activations place on your employees. He's blessed with a family that can help, he's married, lives in Thousand Oaks, and has a family that can help him meet some expenses, monthly living expenses, while he's away, but I'm sure that you have people that work for you that aren't in that same situation. He did have a chance several years ago, before he was activated, he did some research on this, and found out that the city of Oxnard, the city of Thousand Oaks, the city of Simi Valley, all have extended periods of pay differential for their employees. The only government agency in the county that doesn't do that is the county of Ventura. And I would urge you to take a look at that, and see if you can figure out a way to help support these people while they're fulfilling their other functions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Chair Long, I don't know if it's appropriate this time, but I would like to have a report on that if we can, from our CEO.
And if I might throw something in there, information only for the CEO's office while they're doing this report, as I, it's been a long time, so I'm sure things have changed, but it used to be that after 90 days, there was a different pay grade, or pay stipend for the people serving, what was at the old times called TDY, because after 90 days, legally, they went into a permanent change of station mode. So I, just make sure we look into that, so we clearly understand what the true situation is for these longer-term people who are called to active duty.
Looking at how many employees we do have on that active duty, as well as what the cost would be.
And certainly the policy questions of precedence. Okay, if we might then move to Christine Murto. I have four cards here from folks wishing to speak on an item that, well, it's not exactly on the agenda. Okay, Christine, you must request to speak under public comment, so please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Last week, I came before you to discuss my concern regarding the sale of Bahia Cabrio and Peninsula Yacht Anchorage to Almar Management. My primary concerns are that the transfer of the lease to Almar Management did not include a competitive-
May I interrupt just for a moment? Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Sure. He was a lot taller than I am. My primary concerns are that the transfer of the lease to Almar Management did not include a competitive RFP process, and there's no solicitation of public comment. The document that must be signed by tenants in the new lease transfer is an agreement, not a lease, which strips tenants of their rights as boats are considered primary and secondary residences whereby an agreement is negotiable and can be changed at any time. In this case, the terms of the agreement are already set out by Almar and are non-negotiable for tenants. Should the tenants choose not to follow the Almar agreement laid out by Almar, the relationship can be terminated by Almar at any time, and we're requesting an extension for the lease to be signed until at least January or February. Over the last week, there's been significant distress on the part of the majority of tenants in both marinas concerning, but also concerned, but also the neighboring Channel Islands vintage marina and business tenants regarding this issue. Harbor monopoly, restriction to the water are at the root of this discontent, and be ensured that the momentum is growing. We are sensitive to the issues of county leadership, and would like to offer several suggestions to be reviewed by the Board, which has also been offered as a suggestion to the State of California and the management of public marinas. We'd like to suggest the creation of a community advisory board in the Channel Islands harbor. The cab would be made up of tenants from each marina who are the elected delegate to represent their voice in the harbor. Boaters, after all, pay taxes in the county, support business and around the harbor, and have strong interest in harbor activities. The cab would review issues surrounding the harbor and advise the Board- The cab would, would review issues surrounding the harbor and advise the board of, the Board of Supervisors, acting as an independent review board for all harbor issues, including lease renewal, access to water, RFP, competitive review, terms of tenant management agreements, water safety, et cetera. This would ensure the board has an independent perspective of the harbor. Another benefit is having an additional perspective as to the potential adversarial issues which may avoid lawsuits that have plagued the proposals put forth by that, the Harbor Department. We also suggest that marina leases with the county of Ventura be limited to five years with annual, annual tenant satisfaction evaluation, managed yearly by community advisory board. At the end of the five-year period, the cab would review customer satisfaction over a five-year period, request, review requests for renewal, and evaluate whether the lease agreement should be allowed for an additional five-year period. If you are concerned about the transfer of leases to new management over a short five years, I'd like to add that the marinas which were sold to Almar for $3 million would pay for themselves within one year at an average cost of $7,000 to $7,500 per slip, for the nearly 500 slips. I can assure you that most residents would gladly pay at least $7,500 for a 50-year lease and additional paying association fee to cover marina management improvements per month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I just want to ask our county council, because this issue has come up, it came up last week, and it's, it's now come up again today, that the, the suggestion that the board should have done an RFP, a request for proposals, before this was transferred. You've looked at that issue, could you tell us, would the board, legally, would the board been allowed to do an RFP on this transfer?
No, the board could not do an RFP, because the leases were being sold by Channel Islands Harbor Investment Company, not leases newly being let by the county. And so it wasn't the county's option, right, opportunity, anything like that, to conduct an RFP. The only right the county had was to consent or not consent to the sale of the leases.
And on, on what grounds could we consent, and on what grounds could we not consent?
Well, standard of commercial reasonableness is required to be applied, so consent cannot be unreasonably withheld. Your board has to look at whether the transfer proposed is commercially reasonable from the landlord's perspective.
So if we would have said no, we would have had to prove that Almar was not a reasonable company for them to sell this lease to?
That's correct, and it's likely you would have been sued for any lost profits suffered by Channel Islands Harbor Investment Company as a result of the lost sale.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure you guys had a chance to hear county councils.
Madam Chair, I will make comments, excuse me, I'm sorry, on the question raised by Supervisor Bennett at the time we hear item 33.
Robert Arthur?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Arthur, and I'm a boat owner in the Bahia Marina. I look at Ventura Harbor, and I see just bustling business over there. But then I go to Channel Islands Harbor, and I, I see, you know, closed restaurants, crummy-looking buildings, and just a lack of business enthusiasm. What's happened to that place for 10 years? I mean, it, it's just been going down, down, down. And I know you folks on the board, you've got a, you know, huge and sometimes thankless job, and you rely on others, you know, to help you make decisions. Well, obviously, there's been some, in the past 10 years, pretty bad ones on, on Oxnard over there, and sometimes, you know, it's not your fault, you just took the wrong advice, but so be it on that. And it brings me to what I'm here today for. I realize the deal's already been struck with Almar, and, but I know hundreds of people that didn't even know that we were being sold out. We knew that they were, you know, interested in the buildings and things, but the marinas, that's our lives, you know, I mean, some of us save all of our lives for boats, and that's, we're going to retire partly as, as the marina. So it's not just selling houses or buildings, it's 400-plus lives, that's what they, that's the way they live. My boat has been in the same slip for 10 years, and I'm kind of coming here at my peril, because if, if Almar, you know, doesn't like me for any reason, they can give me 30 days' notice to vacate. I mean, that's, that's the way it is, and we have no, no other way to go. I'm told that Almar purchased it for $3 million, and I don't know whether there's 400 slips or 500, I really don't know. I'll be more informed next time I come before you, but if you divide that, if it was 400 and it's $3 million, if you divide that up, that's $7,500 a slip. There are no slips available down south at all. Everybody's moving this way. We're it, we're the last ditch. Ventura and Oxnard, there are no more slips until San Francisco. So this is a huge, huge money deal. I don't, I don't know how it happened, and I know you guys didn't make any money on, on the sale of it, but it seems to me like the county could have done something to protect us. I mean, we, we really rely on you guys to take care of us, and giving them a 50-year lease, gee, that's a license to steal. It's, it's worth so much. Like I said, we have no recourse, and we rely on you folks, and that's all we ask of you. And I couldn't have slept at night unless I'd at least come here and said what I thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Dr. Jeffers?
Morning. I was here last week to talk about this agreement, Almar and Bahia Cabrillo, and I disclosed that the agreement didn't have faces, no humans over there, just boats, houses, and tanks. And last, last week, you saw a young lady came in here, say that she was in hurricane relief, and was concerned about her elderly parents. Well, I was in hurricane relief for a month, same blonde lady over there, Christine, we are medical personnel, we are in the ground of Louisiana and Mississippi for an entire month. And in addition to the loss of lives that we have seen over there, we saw a group of people that lost their community. And this was very shocked to us, very shocked to me that was in the ground. And when I came back, when I came back home, I found that my community's going away. The agreement between Almar and the boat owners has deprived us of any rights. And, and it's true, you may not be able to do anything at this point, but you definitely need to create a voice for us. You need to give us the right to be in the same level that our landlord is, because so far, we're not in this level. And you mentioned today, Ms. Chair, that you're here to protect all seats of the county, and it's your, in your shoulder now to do that. Now, there is an investigation that was requested last week, and now we became aware that in four days, the investigation cleared everybody, and nothing's wrong. You need to have a serious investigation, you need to have independent investigation, not an inside investigation. You need to be our voice, because this issue will not die. Today, last week, you have four people, today you have six, next week you're going to have 10, and pretty soon, the entire harbor going to be in discount in this building. So you need to be our voice, you need to empower us by creating cap committee, but make sure that this lease is reduced to five years of customer review. Until you do that, this is not the same level ground for fighting. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mark Graves?
Hello, I'm Mark Graves, president of Channel Islands Marina Boaters Association, LLC, Simba. What was it, two, three, four years ago, we went through this with Channel Islands Marina? Back then, the county and Lynn Crager and Dennis Heitman, and at the direction of Johnny Johnson, who I heard on KBTA radio a couple of months ago, saying, everything Lynn Crager does, she works at his direction, she does a great job, he's totally pleased with her, at least what I heard on KBTA radio. But several years ago, I came in over the Channel Islands Marina issue, and I said, "Look, just by not moving the sailing center to the other side, where you do not have to displace 100 boat owners, primary and secondary residences, you can avoid lawsuits." Well, you didn't take the advice of the boaters, actually, boaters that came here, we, we closed our doors on our business, we take off and work, we upset family schedules to come here, and we were actually berated, instead of listening to. I'd ask that you listen to us and act upon important things that we might have to say. Anyway, I warn that every lawsuit that cropped up, that the county lost, by the way, and it cost us, what, five, or is it $10 million, with all the additional studies and attorney fees now, to get $4 million from the state for the sailing center? Every one of those could have been avoided if the sailing center would have been put on the other side of the harbor. Now you have a situation where you have another 500 boaters that are going to face displacement as they build larger slips and do all this. Due diligence by the county, you couldn't put out an RFP, but due diligence would have been to see if Almar is indeed a good landlord. In our organization, and you can go down and talk to boaters, past and present, Almar is voted number one as the worst, Vintage is second. Now, why is this? We believe, and this is why it's worthy of an independent investigation, I'd say probably not even our grand jury at the state and/or federal level, that, that laws are broken. We, under the law, we, we have a right to first come, first served, equal access and equal treatment under the law. You don't make up a rule willy-nilly and enforce it on one person and get rid of them. The rules have to be consistent and enforced equally. This does not happen, and Almar is the biggest violator of that. I've personally experienced it. My wife and I had a 30-foot boat there, they just came in one month and said, they skirted the eviction rules for live-abords, which is a 60-day time period. They told us, "You need a 36-foot boat next month, or you're out." I said, "Okay, I'll put a 6-foot davit to hang my dinghy off the stern, you guys measure overall length, I'll pay the extra money," and we're fine. He said, "No, I won't accept that." This is Randy Short, the man you turn some more of our harbor over to, the man that has video cameras with microphones in the workout room, in the jacuzzi, in the clubhouse, you know, and the boaters did not feel comfortable with this. It's one thing to have them outside in case someone's stealing a boat and walking down the road with it, but to constantly monitor electronic gate keys, he knows every time you go to your boat, how long you're there, when you go to the bathroom, how long you're in the bathroom, how many times you went. This, Randy Short has voted number one worst, but what's important here is, does he break the laws? And if he does, then that's cause for his, and it's written in your leases, instant termination of your lease with him. This would have been a minimal due diligence, just to go talk to current and past boaters at Almar and in the harbor. I would ask that the county does do an investigation. Now, we have written letters, boaters, to the grand jury, several grand juries here in town. They seem to choose to investigate the smell of coffee versus investigating the harbor. So for that reason alone, I'd say, the grand jury would be normal to investigate possible government wrongdoing, they would be a good place to go. Well, I think this has to go to state or federal level. I also think that this is just giving more fuel for the boaters to organize in Ventura and Oxnard harbors, and come down here, and put their money together, and hire more lawyers, and start tying this stuff up. Now, what avoids all the lawsuits that the county will end up losing, as they did in the past, and millions of tax dollars? Is that if the Board of Supervisors, legal counsel Johnny Johnson, do the right thing, do due diligence, listen to the boaters, once, go down and talk to these people that live at Almar, talk to the people at Bahia Cabrillo, and make them a part of the process. Do that, and you avoid so many problems, and I, that's what I really wish for. I do not want our county blowing a lot of money again on lawsuits that we'll lose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, just ask county council. The speaker commented that we lost the BISC lawsuit, did we lose the BISC lawsuit?
No, we did not.
Thank you.
That matter has been decided in favor of the county.
No comment, Mr. Graves, please.
Oh, okay.
Madam, madam chair?
Sir?
I have a question. It's, it seems better to ask it now rather than waiting till later, but if some people have to move, live-abords have to move because of the new conditions imposed by Almar, will the owner of the lease, and perhaps the county, have to pay relocation costs, as they do when, when people are forced to relocate from apartments, or condos, or houses, et cetera? That's one question. And these, these conditions may be so restrictive, restrictive as far as people to the public to enjoy the coastal area, the harbor, the beach, the ocean, things under the authority of the California Coastal Commission. Should these conditions imposed by Almar go to the California Coastal Commission for review, and either approval or disapproval, but some kind of judgment? That's my, two questions.
Commendee, supervisor.
Are you asking county council, or are you asking to have a response back? County council?
County, you don't have to respond till we get into the issue.
That would be good, and I'm sure the director of the harbor can comment also. Lou Matthews? Pardon me? Got three left. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Johnson and others. My name is Lou Matthews, and as you know, I am a member of the Mental Health Board and a longtime member of NAMI, the National Alliance for the Mental Ill, but I'm here today to really speak for myself. And I came to give information and to make a recommendation. I was co-chair of the Adult Services Component of the Mental Health Services Act, and I attended either most of the adult meetings or read their reports, and I was most present at the Systems Transformation Committee, and when it came time to approve the plan, I was ready to support it, we had worked very hard. And I was the first to voice that, to say, "Let's vote," at the Mental Health Board, Special Mental Health Board meeting. The Systems Transformation Committee was not fleshed out, but the elements were there, I thought. As I'm sure you know, C.C. Casey was not satisfied. She believed the work of the Systems Transformation Committee was not spelled out enough, not explicit enough. As one committee member put it, "She shook us up." Some of the members got together, worked fast and hard, and presented a more complete The behavioral health, and we met with the behavioral health staff, I think, last Thursday, and the staff, I have a copy of this for you, too, that I will leave with you. The staff felt that it had improved the plan that might be going to the state. But this, of course, caused a ripple. I received concerned phone calls, and I know you heard about it, and people were understandably concerned that the process would be delayed, and no one wanted that, least of all, I think, C.C. The Systems Transformation Committee was chaired by Paul Beoli. He urged members to read the Welfare and Institutions Code, the Mental Health Services Act, and apply them to a transformed system. And we were given copies of successful programs with long records of success, and asked to read them. C.C. not only read them, she studied them. She is quick to pick up inconsistencies in, in things that are said, and when she asks for information that isn't fairly soon forthcoming, she gets it another way. For example, in one case, she wrote to the state when she couldn't get the video that she had asked for, but that, and it had been shown locally, but she had missed it. The state promptly sent it to her, and she shared it with me and with others. C.C. made me feel uncomfortable, and more defensive about voting so quickly. She challenged us to do a better job. I value that. And if I were sitting where you're sitting, accountable to the public and to the state, I would value her even more. I would almost guarantee that where C.C. is, there will be ripples. But I would like to recommend that she be appointed to the Oversight and Accountability Committee when it is established locally under the Mental Health Services Act guidelines from the state. She would be a dedicated, hard-working member, and she doesn't know that I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pardon me? It was helpful. Irene Melik?
Madam Chair, well, Irene is coming up. If I may say, thank you, Lou Matthews, for the work that you've done for so many decades, actually, on mental health, we really appreciate it. I had the honor to appoint you to the Mental Health Board, even though you live outside of my district. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Melik.
Good morning. My name is Irene Melik, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, I'm a member of the- I'm a member of the Ventura County Mental Health Board and Chairman of CASL, which is short for Community Awareness Stakeholder Leadership Committee. This committee provided leadership for the Mental Health Services Act planning in Ventura County. I came to date to speak to you about this remarkable process, as I'll be out of the county when the plan comes up to you for review in a few weeks. And I also brought you a much shorter version, this is the one we have now. I brought you an executive summary to make it simple to kind of gear in to exactly what programs were chosen in this process. First, it's important to understand that the intent of the first section of funding that this planning is for is only 60% of the funding that we will receive from the Mental Health Services Act. The other 40% of the money will come sometime in the next few years for various other kinds of things: education and training, technical services, capital needs, innovation and preventive programs. The plans for that money will have to be made when the regulations are sent to us, and a whole new planning process will begin. The intent for this money is to plan for the development of programs that can, for adults, older adults and some transitional-age youth, reduce homelessness, frequent hospitalization, frequent emergency medical care, the inability to work, the inability to manage independence, reduce isolation, reduce involuntary care, institutionalization, and incarceration. For children, these plans are set for children and youth and some transitional youth. The goal is to reduce the inability to be in a mainstream school environment, school failure, hospitalization, peer and family problems, out-of-home and out-of-county and out-of-area placement, and involvement in the child welfare and juvenile justice system. This has been a very long journey and was completed one step at a time. Like all the other counties in California, we have been learning what to do and how to do it as we've gone along in the process. There were three versions of the requirements from the state, each over 60 pages, that came to us, that needed to be included in the planning for each county. We did not receive the final draft until August. Our journey really began here, when there were extreme cuts in services due to budget shortfall several years ago, that resulted in over $11 million in loss to Ventura County Mental Health and resulted in higher caseloads and loss of close to 1/3 of the staff needed to help treat the mentally ill in our county. At that time, I remember, Mr. Bennett, you were chair, and you looked at me when I came up to say how this would hurt, you know, "Please help us." None of you wanted to make these cuts. You were faced with the reality of your budgets, and we all understood that. But we were very sad about what that was going to do to people. And you said, "Please go after that Prop 63 money." And we did. People in this county joined all the stakeholders, NAMI and the newly-formed Local Mental Health Association, and we went out and helped put it on the ballot, and we helped get the voters out, and we did our very best. It was passed, thanks to LA mainly, and then our journey began again. I have 10 steps to our journey that we've done here. One, we developed a plan-to-plan for services that was revived five different times due to stakeholder input. This was beginning of the cooperative work that was done with the county and many agencies and stakeholders and clients. It was approved by you and sent to Sacramento for approval. Step two, CASL, our committee began to meet once a month, and we developed subcommittees that successfully, one, reached out and conducted over 13 focus groups to learn from consumers, family, employees, service providers, and the community what the most important needs are in Ventura County for the mentally ill. We conducted over three major regional community forums and several small forums targeted to communities who have a higher population of unserved mentally ill. We gathered data that the state needed regarding our county and data that the age-related committees used to help plan where programs were needed. We reached out to our community groups via surveys, newspapers, and radio, so that they could participate and give us their input as to what needs to be done. Then committees like Lou's began to meet, all the age-related groups, children's, transitional youth, adult and older adult.
Ms. Melick, I'm sorry, your time is up. Can you submit your words?
You know, I have, and I have something for each of you that includes the final stuff that I have and the shortened thing, and I also have a list of over 400 people that participated in this process.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Very thorough in your presentation, very good information. Thank you so much.
And congratulations for getting Prop 63 passed.
Yeah. Lou?
I forgot to pass these out.
Okay.
This is the, the first page is the changes, the second page is the.
Good, thank you.
I just also wanted to thank the Mental Health Board. Irene has been probably been referred to as the mother of this plan that we will have before us in a few weeks, but the amount of work and extensive work that she's done, I'm sorry you won't be able to be here for the actual hearing at the Board of Supervisors, but she's had special training, she's gone out, she actually had her phone number be the one when we went out to the community for outreach, and if you had questions, call her home. She's just been wonderful, and I know that, I hope that the Mental Health Board folks that were a part of this and the stakeholders that were a part of this will follow this all the way through, once the money's come in, and monitoring it, and keep doing what you've been doing for over a decade. Really appreciate your service.
Thank you. Meredith Walker, Judith Walker?
Good morning. Let me lower this a little bit. Supervisors and Mr. Johnson, my name is Judith Walker. I am a newer appointee to the County Board of Mental Health and also a NAMI member and various subsidiary other associations, as I've been in the field of mental health for more than 30 years. I remember working with the chronically mentally ill, children, adults, and adolescents, day treatment, inpatient, outpatient, mental health clinics, both here and in Mississippi, and many of the organizations thereabouts, working, obviously, with many colleagues before beginning a private practice about 20 years ago. I come with a full heart, as a daughter and as a mother. I particularly wanted this appointment because I spent seven years with the education that I have, and having raised two children successfully beforehand with difficulties getting help from my daughter, who does not have schizophrenia, but was born with an anomaly, a birth defect, that sometimes has clusters of other things that we worry about, and unfortunately, a lot of teasing. And in some ways, unfortunately, she's also very, very bright and artistic. I wasn't able to get help for her for seven years. I couldn't, I didn't understand what people weren't telling me was available. And then finally, after a huge crisis, I was thrust into the public domain, where I learned a tremendous amount, and a tremendous amount to help other people with. And I wanted to do this work out of gratitude for having the opportunity, thank you, to give back, because I was being given to, finally. I still feel that way. I never, when I first joined the board, I was really impressed with not just the dedication and the full hearts of the other people, because it's not one out of every four families that is touched by mental illness. I won't say 100%, because I can't back that up, but I don't think I've ever gotten to know anybody very well, where there wasn't some of that, the responsibilities that go along with it and the heartache of being touched by it. And certainly, I've recognized the homeless people as the people I used to work with before they lost a lot of the support systems. This board has been so hardworking, everybody at every level, questioning, thinking. For my first seven months there at least, I thought this was a very unusually well-functioning cooperative group of very competent people. The more recent problems we've had have not been in spirit, have not been in character. I think it's more like the way you function here, you have to have us come up at a certain time. You have to have a sense of order in order to function. And that's really been more, as I see it, our problem. I know, and I respect very much Lou Matthews and all the work that she's done, but since she brought up the issue of C.C. Casey, which I hadn't planned on talking about, and I am very fond of C.C. Casey, the order is very hard to maintain, and it makes it harder to work on committees, it makes it harder for me, frankly. I give up referrals, I give up financial gain to be able to be here and give back, but it has to count. I have to be able to make my contributions. I'm still learning how to be on this board and be good at it, and I plan on getting better at it. But it has to be able to function, and I can't afford to give my time if it can't. So thank you very much, all of you, for the opportunity to tell you how grateful I am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and we appreciate your comments and your contribution. Thank you so much. Board member, that concludes public comments that have been submitted. We'll move to board comments at this time. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a list here of people I'd like to do in memory, please. I'll submit it to the board. Turn my mic on, I'm sorry. There is an issue I'd like to raise, and that issue concerns the Channel Islands Harbor, and more specifically, Fisherman's Wharf. I was approached in my office, a person came into my office, who complained about an issue, a lease issue at Channel Islands Harbor, and Fisherman's Wharf. And she had a small business there, and it was included in the same building as American Pizza. It's not very big for a lot of space. She was worried that she may not be able to continue that business, and she was concerned about the relationship of the holder of the lease for that facility, which was very small. It wasn't a master lease for the whole Fisherman's Wharf. It was a small lease. And the small lessor, the small lessor, allowed other businesses to come in and sell their product in the little space that was given to American Pizza. Now, those others that came in could be identified, if you will, quotation marks, as sublesses. And yet, they did not pay insurance, liability insurance. There's no record of them paying liability insurance. They had to pay rent to the quote "master lessie" of this small parcel, which held American Pizza. You can go down and look at it on Fisherman's Wharf. And the amount of money collected by this quote "master lessie" amounted to quite a bit more money than the master lessie paid to the county, paid to the harbor department. I believe the information that I've received from the auditor controller indicated $1,400 a month was paid for this space at Fisherman's Wharf. Now, the person that came into my office was so concerned because they had such a good business, I mean a real good business. I asked Johnny Johnson by email to investigate two issues. One was this complicated arrangement with the holder of the lease for American Pizza. And two was the comments made allegedly by Mr. Heitman to the person who brought me the complaint. I told her, I said, "You need to go talk with the harbor management." And so she went to talk with the harbor management, and I hope some kind of arrangement will be there for her to continue her business. That's what she wants, and she wants to pay anything she has to pay to do that, including the insurance, which she didn't know was required. But Mr. Heitman, when the person told him, and he did meet with her, that she had gone to my office, to the office of John Flynn, he said to her, "Why did you go to his office? He has no authority in this harbor. He has nothing to say about this harbor." These comments were allegedly made by Mr. Heitman. I asked Mr. Johnson to investigate, to investigate, what's going on here? Now, the lease with the sublesses created by the master lessor has been operating there for about a year, right under the nose of Mr. Johnson, who's the CEO of this county, and not really giving proper oversight to the harbor. So that's my second comment. I would hope that Johnny Johnson would come forward with the information I requested. And County Counsel, I also sent him a copy of the same email I sent to Johnny Johnson, the CEO, and I asked County Counsel this morning if he had any information as yet. He said, "No, he really hasn't had time to do that." So I bring that to the board with a request to have this issue looked into with depth, so that I can feel comfortable that we're giving the proper oversight to this harbor.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to let the board know that we had one of the nicest picnics ever in Oak Park. We had about 700 people attend. It was a thank-you lunch for the firefighters that helped out there, and Ventura County Fire Department was out there and well-represented, and people were so much appreciative of the firefighters, and it was nice. Assemblymember Fran Pavly organized it, and it was a, if you ever want to get a lot of people to a picnic, she says you just have free food, firefighters, and a beautiful day, and that's what we had, and it was just a wonderful event. And I just wanted to let you know about that, and then also ask that the board close in honor of the following people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. This is one of the sadder days for me to do our adjournment memory. A very good friend of mine passed away on Saturday. He lives in my district, he works in Supervisor Long's district at the airport, Doug Dolinkoff, Screaming Eagles Aviation. He was my appointee to the Aviation Advisory Committee. We've been friends for 20 years. His wife, Gail, and his daughter, Annie, and his son, Eric, we're really missing him terribly right now, and it was a sudden, unexpected heart attack, and so I asked the board to make a special request, asked the board to adjourn in his memory as well as the other people on this list. Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, a couple of the comments that I had, I think I will save for later on in the meeting. They're relative to the harbor and some of the boaters I did visit over the last week. My only other comment is that I ask for the board to adjourn in memory of the persons on this list, all of whom are veterans of service to the United States and our various armed forces. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I don't have any further comments to add this morning, no adjournment memories, and I'd like, if we could... And I'd like, if we could, step into a closed session, and then we'll be back out here for a time sentence.
Supervisor Michaels, I apologize for diverting you from the business at hand today. No apology is necessary, Supervisor Michaels. It's my first board meeting ever in any community, so I was fascinated and very interested. So thank you for having me this morning. I'll keep this really brief. I've been in the area maybe about five months, and intensely injected in the assimilation process with the base for about two months, and there's one thing that is very, very clear to me, and that is that this installation enjoys the best civilian leadership, support, and advocacy from this county as any base in the nation or overseas, and I feel lucky and blessed to be part of this partnership. So I look forward to working with you all closely and intensely throughout the challenges that will visit us over the next several years, and thanks for having me here this morning.
Well, thank you, and we'll come down and meet and greet officially, but I'd also like to welcome your wife and your family, your children here, and hope that they, I know military brats, I have two of them, and I know they'll assimilate well, and they'll be such an asset to our community and to the schools that they attend, and so we're just thrilled to have you here. And while we're coming down, I'd also like the board to recognize that Mr. Gene Fisher is here in support. He's the co-chair of RDP 21, and Councilwoman Charlotte Craven, who is vice chair of RDP 21. And so with that, let's all go down and shake hands and give them an official welcome.
And what's this?
I will bring that down and explain when I get there.
All right.
I have a lot of splaining to do, Ricky.
And now the explanation for the old egg on the face routine. When I submitted the board letter, and I was the one that did the final approval on the board letter, it happens to say, "A gift from the United States Air Force Thunderbird Demonstration Team. Twenty-seven years of being married to an Air Force fighter pilot caused all sorts of habits to happen." I looked at it, signed off on it, and with most abject apologies to our Navy partners, we were presented with this photo to the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County by the United States Navy's Flight Demonstration Team, the Blue Angels, lovingly known as the Blues. And so I am so sorry, and I hope this doesn't ruin our relationship forever, Captain.
There you go. Chair of the board. We're good for this. I'm so sorry.
You can clearly tell it's the Blue Angels, so.
You've got to expect it.
All right, Supervisor Michaels, we'll forgive you, give you toast with those eggs, and move on. And Captain, welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Captain Fisher, the XO. Thank you very much. Oh, I want flying. I've got a close to the hat. They shoot at. No, that's something I was, yes. I'll think of it, something I was.
the board letter, it happens to say, "A gift from the United States Air Force Thunderbird Demonstration Team. Twenty-seven years of being married to an Air Force fighter pilot caused all sorts of habits to happen." I looked at it, signed off on it, and with most abject apologies to our Navy partners, we were presented with this photo to the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County by the United States Navy's Flight Demonstration Team, the Blue Angels, lovingly known as the Blues. And so I am so sorry. And I hope this doesn't ruin our relationship forever, Captain.
There you go. Chair of the board. We're good for this. I'm so sorry.
You can clearly tell it's a Blue Angels, so...
You've got to expect it.
All right, Supervisor Michael, we'll forgive you, give you toast with those eggs, and move on. And Captain, welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
And thank you all for coming. Captain Fisher, the XO, thank you very much. Oh, I want flying wings. I've got a close to the hat, too. They shoot at. No, that's something I was... Yes?
Can I quickly look out on that?
Yeah. I'll think of it. Something I was...
Ellis?
No. It was a fort at one time. Okay, who's the historian in the audience? What's the name of the fort in New York Harbor, the stop of Ellis Island, Red Brick Fort? Very historical. Oh, boy, we're all failures. No, it's not Ellis Island. We'll think about it. We'll report next weekend to board comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Michael.
You're welcome. And again, my apologies. Please don't put this off on the Board of Supervisors. That was 100% my screw-up, so I'm sorry.
Okay, our next item, 9:30 time certain, is item 21, and it's the adoption of an ordinance of Ventura County Board of Supervisors, repealing and enacting Section 1331 of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, establishing time and place and meetings of the Board of Supervisors. This item was heard first last week. Second hearing for us.
Do we have any cards?
No cards.
I would move adoption of the ordinance.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Then item 22, time certain, adoption of an ordinance of Board of Supervisors of Ventura County, Ventura, establishing fees pertaining to copying public records. Two was heard on the 25th of October.
Any cards?
No cards.
Seeing none, I would move adoption of the ordinance.
It's a motion and a second. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Okay, now we'll move to our regular agenda, because our next item's up, our time certain 10 a.m.s. So before that, if we could hear item 26, Harbor Department approval of an amended and restated lease. Good morning, Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, I am happy to be here this morning with Steve Binger, sitting in the front row, who is our lessee, and his father before him at Marine Emporium Landing. But if you'll indulge me before I get into this board item, which will be short, I'd like to make a quick comment relating back to Supervisor Flynn's comments on Fisherman's Wharf. You might be happy to know, we did discover a couple of months ago that this lessee was entering illegal subleases, not in writing, just verbal. We gave him a warning, and then about 10 days ago, in fact, almost two weeks ago now, I hand-delivered the eviction notice myself. He is gone, and we are attempting to enter a new lease, a tenant lease, just a short-term lease, with the operator who was working underneath him. So he was badly taking advantage of the people who he was working with, and...
Madam Chair, if I may make a comment, it just doesn't really have anything to do with the issue, but it is something I brought up. Why, then, did it take so long for you to discover this? And number two, it seemed to move you very quickly when you learned I was involved with it.
No, actually, I didn't know you were involved when we started taking action, Supervisor Flynn. And the reason we didn't learn about it early is because the subleases were at night, and we generally don't have people on the property at night. Anyway, moving ahead with Marine Emporium Landing, it is just four weeks ago, it was four weeks on Sunday, that the largest building on Marine Emporium Landing burned down. And all of you, I think, remember my appearance before the board right after that. And I think since this fire, you could ask Mr. Binger, if you like, that this is a real example of how a partnership can work between government and the private sector, because as it's worked out, the county can work to ensure that appropriate and speedy review process of permits happens. The building is down, it started coming down a week ago today. And they can act as a private entity much more quickly than we can to retain a demolition contractor, process a new building, hire an architect, and they already have drawings of a replacement project. The work on this lease, however, has nothing to do with that fire. It's been underway for more than a year. I do have a couple of corrected pages that I'd like to distribute in just a moment. What this is, is the new form lease. It is an amended and restated lease, and resolves a number of old issues. Excuse me. One, of course, is that end-of-lease issue, which has been a major issue for the county, and I believe this is just about the last lease we'll confront that issue on. We had an issue that was of longstanding, it was standing as a potential default when I got here, on a neighboring parcel, X1B, that is part of this leasehold. This lease resolves that matter, it resolves the use of the commercial fishing wharf, and it resolves an old issue of how rent is paid on CAM. The way this amended and restated lease works is that there are currently 15 years on this lease. The 15 years remain in place. There are no additional years with this restatement. What the lessee has received, or will receive, but has negotiated pending the board's action, is an option to increase term by reinvestment in the parcel, which is something that has happened in other leases within the harbor. With the approval of the lease, I think we've made it very clear, both in the lease and in the board letter, that there are no guarantees that this board will approve the specific projects, but it gives the lessee the option to pursue them. We've drawn in the new leases a very hard line between the board's regulatory authority, which it has when reviewing SEQA and other matters with new projects, and its proprietary authority as a landowner and a lessee of land. Very quickly, there are four components, I think five components to this lease. One of the most important to me personally, as you're a harbor director, is the replacement of the slips that lie right in front of this parcel. Like many of the slips in the harbor, they're aging and need to be replaced. This is intended to be the first action taken by the lessee. It may now be the first action accompanied by the rebuilding of the burned-down building, because obviously we would want that restored, it's the major source of income. The second is an option for construction of an 8,000-square-foot terminal building on parcel H1. This one does require a public works plan amendment, and would be coming back to your board, at which time you would make a separate judgment about whether that was acceptable to you. The third is the construction component C of a small commercial and sport fishing building on parcel X1B. This is already included in the public works plan, and in fact, construction there is required by both their current and this new proposed lease. Component D is an expansion, actually, to the building that just burned down, would be right behind it, as you saw on the site plan. And then finally, it calls for replacing the building on parcel H2 as quickly as possible. In exchange for all of this investment, the lessee would get a new, essentially, a new 50-year lease, up to 55 years if their expenditures are extraordinary. I'm looking at my notes to see if there is anything else I believe. I'll give you the changed pages. The changed pages result to the adjustments we've had to make in the last couple of weeks since the building burned down. Obviously, that changed a couple of things in this lease we've been working on so long, and the lessee was hoping not to delay any longer. And what it does is, instead of rehabilitation of the two existing buildings, it calls for full replacement of the existing building on H2, plus $350,000 minimum on remodeling of the H1 building, instead of a total of $770,000 remodeling on the two. It's just an adjustment in numbers to recognize that they have to entirely rebuild. I'd be happy to take any questions, or you may want to hear from Mr. Binger.
I have a question regarding a statement in the staff report on page five. One, two, three, fourth paragraph, last sentence. Errors and other legal descriptions within the harbor have been discovered in recent years, making this step of verification necessary, and that is the step stated in the paragraph.
Right.
We know that we've had issues with what has been historically leases that, for whatever reasons, weren't crafted as well for the interest of the taxpayers and the enterprise. So we are now, and you've been doing great due diligence in trying to bring those leases forward and correct those. I guess my question is, what... Well, this is the last significant one. What kind of errors have we been seeing besides wrong descriptions for parcels?
Yeah, what we've asked this lessee to do, and then I'll back into your question, is to have his architect... Now, it's so much easier using the GIS system, to take the legal description that has been in the lease for the last 40 years, rather than requiring a new survey straight off the bat, and see whether or not the legal description, as plotted on real land, matches what we believe the leasehold to be. The kinds of problems we've had, well, for example, at Channel Islands Marina, the buildings were built in places totally other than the lease parcel was. They weren't even on the lease parcel. In the case of Fisherman's Wharf, we have a number of buildings that are built off the lease parcel, the whole addition to the building going toward the old launch ramp. In the case of the Casa Serena, we had about a 10-foot strip, I may be wrong about the 10 feet, but a 10-foot strip to the west side of the Casa Serena Hotel that wasn't in the lease parcel, for some reason. Between the marina and the hotel, there was an error in the description that caused a gap. This would probably never be significant, except in the case maybe of an insurance issue, you know, if there was a trip and fall, and the insurance said, "Ah, we don't have to cover that," or whatever. It just makes good business sense to clean it up, and so we've agreed to take a look at it as the planning goes on for the building here.
Thank you. I have speaker cards on this item, but are there any other board questions?
Questions.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. One question I have is, perhaps this is to the CEO, or maybe Lynn, or maybe the auditor controller. I noticed, and I've been noticing this extensively lately, in the last least year or two, the whole issue that Lynn Krieger brings to the board is not reviewed by the auditor controller. We used to always have a review by the auditor controller. This one does not include a review, and my question is, why is this happening?
Actually, I don't believe that's the case. I think this board letter and lease did go to the auditor controller for review.
That's not what it says.
I believe the board letters are going through the auditor controller's office. There are times when the auditor controller does not have the time or the staff to get to it in a timely way, or there are times when we send it to them on very short notice, which makes it difficult for them, unless it requires some kind of an actual audit accounting function. It's a courtesy, and it's a past practice, but it has very little to do with the policy decisions that are made. And if, in this case, there is perceived to be some, we'd be happy to take a look at that.
Let me, Madam Chair, with your permission, let me just read to you the next-to-last paragraph, so we're clear about whether or not the auditor controller did review this. The county executive office and the county council have reviewed this letter. The Harbor Commission reviewed these documents on October 19, 2005, and unanimously recommends your approval. The issue here with the auditor controller is one I'm going to bring later to the board. But we forget that county government really operates best, all government in this country, when you have checks and balances. She's a check, and we bypass the check. This could lead to big, big, big problems down the road. But my question... Further questions are...
For the record, I don't concur with those remarks.
Obviously.
I don't either.
Obviously. We'll have that issue come up later, and talk about checks and balances, and maybe where we're going. I do have a question of county council. It's still difficult to comprehend or understand who is the lead agency on this particular issue, or any issue with the harbor, where in the past, we thought we had to go to the Coastal Commission. Is the Coastal Commission... Are we required, Mr. County Council, to do an EIR on this plan?
Not on this lease.
On the lease, I mean.
An EIR is not required on this lease.
Okay. Would an EIR be required once a plan comes forward?
If a plan for redevelopment is to result in a notice of impending development to be filed with the Coastal Commission, or if there is going to be a public works plan amendment, environmental review may be necessary, but that is pursuant to the Coastal Commission's certified regulatory program. And so there isn't what is normally known as an EIR under SEQA. In fact, there is a statutory exemption under SEQA for the Coastal Commission's certified regulatory program. You may recall some questions raised recently in connection with the boating center lawsuit, and the Superior Court agreed with the county's perspective on the Santa Barbara Flower Growers case, which says that the Coastal Commission's certified regulatory program controls.
Okay, it's kind of troubling, because if that's the case, if no SEQA is required to follow in this particular lease, and then subsequently the plan, then why... Maybe I misunderstand this, Lynn Krieger. Why are you asking them for an exemption?
We are citing, and this is based on county council's review, we're citing the exemption from SEQA, and I think one of the grounds here is the fact that under the item four on page six says that it's subject to the certified regulatory program of the California Coastal Commission. So this merely cites, for the public's benefit, how the environmental review will be conducted. And so this exemption, this exemption is always placed here so that the public understands how the county is handling environmental issues, so that we can be a responsible party and keep the public informed. That would be the reason.
I understand what you said, but in that case, then the word itself is not required. Exemption has a strong, powerful meaning here, and it's not really required, according to county council.
Supervisor Flynn, actually, it is a statutory exemption from SEQA that allows us not to do the EIR. And so there does have to be a determination by your board that this is exempt from SEQA. And it's not just, I might add, exempt because of that certified regulatory program. There are other categorical exemptions that are cited. And to make certain that this proceeding is not subject to challenge by someone who may wish to challenge on whatever grounds they choose, we believe and urge the Harbor Department, out of an abundance of caution, to ask your board to find this lease exempt from SEQA on all conceivable grounds.
Anyway, I raised the question because I think it's an important question. Let me go on, and I'm not sure that I really agree with everything that's been said about SEQA here at this point in time. Let me just ask some questions. Lynn, let me ask you, you know, we're asked to approve something here, and yet, there's no parcel map, there's nothing to look at, there are no models to look at. If we compare your presentation, and I want to know why we don't have those, to, say, a presentation by the airport authority, the airport authority goes into great detail, not only here, but also at the authority meetings, and yet, we don't have that from you. I would hope that you could change that.
Well, this is merely an option for the lessee to pursue. This means that final plans are not done. And generally, we ask, do not ask lessees, the board can certainly change that policy if they wish, we generally ask the lessee not to prepare models, because we would prefer that investment to be made in the buildings, which are eventually going to come back to the county and the taxpayer, and not to have the investment made in a piece of plastic that's going to go to the trash. So generally speaking, but this is merely an option to pursue, it is not a final project, which is part of the reason it's an exempt item at this time, that it's merely a lease with a right to pursue an option.
Okay. Now, are you saying, then, by your comments, that you're... That Mr. Binger will bring forth a presentation on what the buildings are going to look at, a sketch of them, and so forth, so we understand what is happening with these parcels?
Certainly. When the project is pursued, he will be coming back with more detailed plans, absolutely.
And they would require the approval of the board?
I'm assuming that the board wouldn't do the necessary public works plan amendments and others for some of these projects without seeing what they would look like. I'm assuming that's the case.
Madam Chair, I appreciate you allowing me to continue on the question period. Let me just make a comment about the Bingers. And I could say the same thing to Mike Kootnick. You have been, and I did, I think, two weeks ago, you've been... Your father and you have been outstanding in the harbor. You really have done a good job, and we're very proud of you. Your dad and I worked and worked together on issues for a long time. I remember your father telling me one time, "John, you're the best Democrat I've ever known." And then he added, "But you're the only one I've ever known." These... Steve, we've had so many issues with the harbor that the board itself needs to get into more detail, to understand exactly what it's doing here. And I'm not sure the information that we have here, or the presentation that we just heard, gives us that information. For example, the parking lot, the county, according to the information we have here, is going to participate in the redoing of the parking lot.
John?
Yeah. Yeah.
The development plan that we've been discussing with the, the development plan that we've been discussing with the county for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
We have renderings, we have some pretty specific plans. However, what my understanding is, we're here for today, is to restate our existing lease, which was started in 1985, had a termination date of September 30th, 2020, and give us an option to extend that lease, based on investment that we will make in the leasehold. County staff thus far likes our plans of redevelopment. So, as far as the nuts and bolts of the redevelopment, I think that this might not be the right time to go through that. There's going to be ample opportunity to look at renderings, to look at the architectural theme, to look at the courtyards that are developed, to look at the public access, the promenades, the parking lot, how this is going to complement the community, how it's going to benefit public access to the Channel Islands, and so on. So, I believe that we are addressing some issues of an old, outdated lease that was signed back in September of 1985, 20 years ago, bringing that to today's conformity with the other leases in the harbor.
Yeah.
Eliminating all those gray lines, the fuzzy lines, and getting ourselves on track to move forward.
Okay. Again, I repeat, I really have great faith in you and the Binger family for what you've done with the harbor. But you know, we've had so much, at least I have had, so much difficulty in following what we're doing in the harbor, and we have not really received the kind of detailed due diligence material that we should be receiving from the harbor director.
Well, you can be assured that we won't be investing the kind of money that we're looking at without going through the due diligence process.
So, you're telling me, Steve, that you're going to bring these sketches that you have and the plan that you have back to the board?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm still somewhat concerned about what we're doing here, because I have lost, at least my faith is being challenged, I'll put it that way, by the oversight of the county council. So, that's the reason for my question.
Supervisor, I think that that's another issue for a future agenda item, so I'd like to ask if you have further questions regarding the items before, so we conclude those.
Well, as long as I can understand that this is going to come back, and we're going to see specifically what you're going to do, Steve, then I can appreciate that.
Yeah, we have some renderings, actually, that we could have brought in here and put on the wall. They're about eight feet long and four feet high, but I realize the board's time is precious, and that's really not what the issue, as I understood, was today.
The board has plenty of time to look at those.
They will come back to us at the time needed. Thank you.
If I could add...
Please.
All right, well, good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Supervisors. Mr. Johnson. I won't take too much of your time here, but I do appreciate you considering this lease that's before you. I think I've been introduced. My name is Steve Binger. My father and I, Fred Binger, own the Marine Emporium Landing. My father started in the harbor in 1965, in a little marine hardware store called Seacoast Marine. That's where the present site of the Port Royal is today. Used to be next to the China Clipper, which is now known as the Whale's Tail. And this could be a really fun story we could tell around a campfire, so I'll try to cinch it up. My father built a building on the parcel known as H1 in 1974, and another one on parcel H2, adjacent to the one on H1. We've been working on our lease here for a couple of years with Lynn and her staff, most diligently, of course, the last nine to 12 months. I forgot to say something here. My dad started in '65, and after I passed my probationary training period about 12 years ago, after putting 24 years in, I currently am the operator of the Marine Emporium Landing. At any rate, without taking too much time, our center has gone through ups and downs. We started in the '70s. We're a boater-related center. We provided services for boat owners. It was a thriving center in the '70s and the '80s. The early 1990s came the recession, came luxury tax on boats, came internet sources for marine hardware and so on, and the whole venue, the whole, the whole world changed for us at the harbor. By 1994, 1995, there were off-the-water, less expensive locations for marine businesses to locate, and due to the lower per square foot rate, and due to no percentage rents, we saw many of our marine-related businesses go to Victoria and Fifth Street and off-the-water locations. 1995, we found ourselves 40% vacant in the two buildings. At that time, we did some visionering and decided to look at what we could do with this tremendous asset that we had in the harbor, that was pretty much fledgling at that time. We decided to feature the Channel Islands National Park and the Channel Islands Harbor as an attraction to the residents of Ventura County and to Los Angeles County. Before, we had a market of about 2,800 people. By doing this, we may be able to provide public access to the islands, market ourselves to the 750,000 residents of Ventura County, I know the figure's different now, and also the 6 million people that live across the hill. At that time, we, a couple hills, at that time, we recruited whale-watching, island excursions, sport fishing, island kayaking, electric boat rentals, and scuba diving, and we followed through with our vision, and by the year 2000, we were 100% leased. From the years 2001 to 2004, the gross retail revenues generated in the Marine Emporium Landing were up over 20% each year. That means the aggregate of all revenues generated in the center. Because of that growth, and because of the public enjoyment that was taking place on our center, we decided that the best thing and the thing that was needed the most was to reconfigure our parcel and our improvements to better suit those of a visitor, of a visitor, of marine-related visitor activities. Remember, we were originally designed to service boat owners and boater-serving activities, engine shop, sail loft, channery. Channery's still a great activity today, but it was designed totally different. So, that's when we, and besides the fact we're 100% leased, and we only had a couple bathrooms for all the people going whale-watching, doesn't work, you need to do something. There's driveway that went through the center, sure would be a lot nicer if it was a courtyard where people could meet, and they could wait, and they could have something to eat, and wait for the boat. So, that really prompted us to do the redevelopment plan that you've got a glimpse of in your package today. So, to get to that point, we needed to iron out the bugs that were in our old lease, and that's what Lynn and her staff have done. And our discussions led to negotiations, those negotiations led to the lease that's before you today. So, I'd look for your support and your vote to pass this lease. I thank the other lessies that are here today, supporting our efforts, and thank Lynn and her staff for her help.
Thank you.
I'll vote for questions.
No, no further questions for you.
All right, thank you.
I do have a public speaking card. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the perspective you've given us over the last 20 years of the investment. Michael Kootnick?
As soon as this item's done.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, good morning. I come before you as a citizen of Oxnard, a lessee in Channel Islands Harbor, and as president of Friends of Channel Islands Harbor, which is the new Lessies Association. I also am that, I have a membership with Almar and with Marine Emporium Landing as fellow lessies, and I think the presentation that was just before you was excellent, one of the best I've heard here. When you discuss Channel Islands Harbor, you can't go into conversation without thinking about the likes of Martin V. Smith, Harry Nelson, and Fred Binger. Bud Smith's visions in this harbor have touched us and continue to touch us to this day. Harry Nelson, you don't think about marinas, you think about marine art. You think about good things that have been brought to this harbor by Mr. Nelson, and especially a wonderful maritime museum. Harry tough at the negotiating table, but fair. He was, I always thought, and maybe this term goes along with my age, I always thought that Harry was a straight shooter, and he always told you what was on his mind. That was the good news, and that was the bad news. Almar, to this day, is a company that's known for its ingenuity, its intelligence, and especially its integrity. I have the utmost respect for Fred Binger and for the Binger family, what they have done for Channel Islands Harbor and Oxnard at large. During this past 22 years, I've had the ability to work with all three of these luminaries who I've just discussed. Fast forward to the present time, I now have the ability to work with Steve Binger and work closely with him on harbor issues. Steve brings to you today, to the table, well-articulated ideas, which will enhance the leasehold and be a bright shining spot in Channel Islands Harbor. I'd like to close by saying to the board of supervisors, how much I and other lessies appreciate your interest, especially your collective support for those lessies who have put time, effort, sacrifice, and hard dollars into their investments, in which they have created successful businesses that have in turn enriched this beautiful harbor. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, sir. That concludes public comments on item 26. Any further questions or comments? Item is before the board.
Move approval?
Some motion in a second to move approval with the amended and restated lease on item 26. Any objection to that motion?
Madam Chair? Supervisor Flynn? I'm going to abstain on the motion, Steve Binger, mainly, it's not to be read as something against you. It's to be read and understood as something about the management of the harbor, and that would come under Mr. Johnson. I just don't think that we're getting the kind of information that we need, but I certainly respect you and your father for all that you've done, and I thank you. So, mine is an abstention, it's not a no vote at this time, because I still want to see more information. So, I thank you. I think Mike Kootnick is very much right in his comments, but I would include Mike's name to the three people that he mentioned. He's been an outstanding major lessee at the harbor, along with Martin Smith. Okay, I knew him very well, we met quite often. Harry Nelson was a great human being. He really did an outstanding job. So, I agree with every statement that you made about the family. I would also add the Farrell family, however, and the Donlin family, because they were the first ones into the harbor, and they really put a lot of work and a big risk for them about 40 years ago. So, thank you for your presentation. Steve, I'll come down and meet with you.
There are four votes in support of the item, and one abstention. The item passes. Thank you. All right, board, we're going to go to our time-certain 10 o'clock items, and then we'll be back for item 33. The first time-certain 10 o'clock item is the item 23, demonstration of online employee enrollment for medical and other health insurance programs.
Good morning, Chair Long, and members of the board. Today, I'm going to give a preview. Today is November 1st, our first day for open enrollment, and this is a period in which employees can go in and look at their flexible benefit programs and choose new medical, dental, or vision plans for next year. What we've done is something unique, and that's why we're bringing it to the board here. Then, in the past, in the past, we've gone traditionally through a system of mail home packets and then a telephone enrollment system. We have changed that throughout the year. You've been participating in some of the procurements and so forth of the systems to establish this. We've set up several electronic forms and have converted to an electronic enrollment system via the Internet or through the computer systems here. We've done three major things. We've developed a webpage, of which is presented right here, of which communicates most of our materials, and will be further developed and ongoing with communications. We've developed the open enrollment, or online enrollment, through the Ventura County Human Resources Payroll System, commonly known as VCHRP. And we've also implemented the Authoria product, which is a help tool to communicate benefits personalized to the employee. And I'll demonstrate those really quickly. I know your time is short today, so we'll just go through quickly, since everyone will have an opportunity and should go through the open enrollment process. Now, if individuals got their mail-in packets at home this weekend, hopefully, or today should be the last day for those last mailed out, in which communicates your current benefits. If there's no changes needed, nothing is, needs to be done, and the system will automatically roll that over, and confirmations will go out, so individuals will be communicated on their benefits for next year, starting January. However, if you would like to review that, or to change, make changes, you can do that online through your home computer. You'll log into our website here, ceocountyventura.org/benefits, and go to the open enrollment webpage, and hopefully, we're going to have some speed here on the Internet. But it will click into a description in which we'll describe the open enrollment process. Now, open enrollment this year will be for one month. Normally, it's about a 10-day period on there to allow more time for people to get familiar with the system. Okay? And it describes what you need to do. Down at the bottom, it shows that there's the handbook that you received through your department and so forth, other policy items, and rates, information, and communications of meetings. You'll click into enroll, and this is going into the VCHRP system, too many acronyms here, on that. And this is probably the most difficult part of the whole enrollment process, is to log on to the system. You need to know your employee ID number and a password, and that's set up. And our department reps out in the departments have set up so they can assist their employees on this process, and have done a great job there. And I will log in as myself, and you'll log into the system, and in the materials, and there's an error. All right. We worked this earlier, so...
Take your time. I always put one extra little dot there, and that just kicks it back.
And I'll call down my staff here in a second if this is... All right, something's...
Now, is your ID in, well, your password wouldn't be, but is your ID on the...
The ID's correct. It's more than likely with the server of the main system at this point in time is not functioning. Is they checking upstairs?
Works for me.
Because right before the meeting, we tested it down here, and it worked.
Yeah. Okay. Move along.
All right. I can just go through the process. And it goes through, and you log in, and it's very simple. It's actually a very simple system to use. You'll go to your homepage in the benefits and go into the enrollment section. In that enrollment section, it will say that you need to enroll. You hit the select button, and it shows all that you're currently enrolled and your options that you have. And to make a change, all you do is hit the edit button. And the edit button brings up all the options personalized to the individual, all right, that they can choose on their plans. And it's a radio button. All you have to do is click on the radio button. This is the plan I want. Hit submit, and that's how simple. Now, to help aid in the process, we have a button on there called My Benefits, and that's the Authoria product that we wanted to demonstrate. And the Authoria product then personalizes the payroll information in order to make your... selections, so you actually don't have to go through the handbook in order to do that. I guess the system's not working, we'll, we'll check it out later. But, I bet I was timed out, so that, that's because we enrolled, we logged on earlier. It allows you to go in to My Benefits, and it'll bring up your profile, what your, your benefits are related to your bargaining unit and your benefits package. In there, you can go in, this is what I'm currently enrolled, this is my medical plan, and it gives you options. Well, let me compare to the new medical plans. You can pull up a matrix that will compare all the medical plans that we have to make your selections, and easily go back. Yeah, see, we even have our consultant up there.
They're persistent there.
So, up there, trying it. So, and then you're able to compare those benefits and go right into the enrollment system and log in. It will automatically select it, you go in there, make the changes, you can make many changes during the whole month, you can change it as many times as you want, and then at the close of it, you will get a confirmation statement. And, and basically, you can do it all from your home. And so you can just log in, sit down with those that are, that have vested interests in your benefits, and go through that. You can add dependents, take dependents off, and, and all those things, and it's really self-help. It's very, very simple and simplistic to, to use. It'll be a great advancement in the future, and all our benefits will be online then in the future as we roll out all our policies and procedures in order so employees can have all the information at their fingertips, don't have to filter through multiple people, don't have to wonder on what their benefits are. And the, the system is set up in an answer-question format, very simple to read, bullet lists, no more than three-sentence answers, so it's, so it communicates clearly. We appreciate your support in that. It, it's been a great project, it will be a great benefit this year. We do have it that they can do. We are encouraging online enrollment for everyone to participate. We do know that individuals don't have access to computers either at home or at work, so we are encouraging departments to develop new means to access that, as well as on the main lobby here, we have kiosks now set up for individuals to use those, and we have extended hours in which people can participate in that. This being the first year, we do have a manual process in place that individuals can easily sign the worksheet and send it in if they do not have access to that. Our goal is 60 to 70 percent of the entire population will go through the online system, and then next year, we will have complete success of everyone participating in that activity. I'd just like to recognize real quick, we do have some staff that have spent a tremendous amount of time in developing, it is a tremendous amount of information that has gone into these systems. Susan DeMile from my staff and Kelly Akers, they're, they're back there, the spearheads in that. We'd like to recognize Jeff Lippis and also Louise Webster from the Otter Controllers Office, who have also spent tremendous amount of time in getting the system prepared for this so we could roll this out. Sorry that my, my computer abilities didn't allow us to demonstrate it fully, but I encourage you to go online and, and check that out, and that's what we have for you. So, thank you. Any questions about that?
Questions? Supervisor Michael.
Just one quick one. You said that, that the employee will be sent a confirmation.
That's correct.
Now, being as how this is the first year, and sometimes we run into people who don't do it right, or they're not paying attention, whatever can happen, if they get the confirmation and it's incorrect, do they still have adequate time to work with a person to?
The instructions they'll get on that is, all they have to do is make the corrections on the form itself and just send that to us.
And the time limit?
They'll, they'll have to do that by the end of the year, basically.
Okay, okay. I just, I wanted that kind of out there, because some people are nervous about a new system or whatever, and to say that you're getting a letter of confirmation, you, you still have an opportunity to fix it if it's not correct.
That's correct. You have, you'll get it about the second week in December, and you have really until the end of the month to, to get that in.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
I'll just compliment you. I know it's a good partnership with ISD in getting this online, and I know that it will not only be helpful for employees to register and understand and have everything in one place, but also I think it would be probably time-saving and, and cost savings, and that you'll have all that information already available for you in electronic form for you to do your analysis and make sure your benefits are exactly as you registered them to be.
Very good. Yes, we hope so. Thank you.
Okay. Good work. Thank you. All right, Board members, our next time certain item is presentation by the Workforce Investment Board on their accomplishments, and good morning.
Good morning.
And welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors, and Executive Johnson. I think it's, I'm Tom Van Berkom, and I think the last time I appeared before you, I was juggling which glasses and going to go get some new glasses to be able to see with. Fortunately, the WIB has accomplished a lot more in the year than I have, because I am still juggling glasses whenever I speak. But it's a real pleasure to talk about what we have done during the last year, where I had the, the pleasure of serving as Chair. I'd like to also just take a second to ask our Board, several members of our Board are here with us today, and if those members of the Workforce Board that are here, if you just stand, so, we have several here today, and Elaine Crandall, our new Executive Director, is here today as well. So it's my, my pleasure to have them here. I think, as we've discussed on a number of occasions, that the Workforce Investment Board, as, as the leading organization looking at these issues in the county, is challenged by really sort of the state of the Ventura County workforce situation. Even though employment or unemployment, I guess I should say, hovers under 5 percent, there's a number of issues that present challenges that we've had to address, and I wanted to just highlight a couple of those, because they're sort of the factoids that we use in determining what programs to, to endeavor success in. The, one of the, one of the interesting factoids about the population is that in the Hispanic population, which is growing, that the largest predominance of youth are Hispanic, and that that is an issue that we have to make sure we're sufficiently addressing. Another thing that those of us that are baby boomers are approaching retirement age, and one of the concerns in the county is this, the baby boomers, boomers retire, that we may not have the skills requisite for the jobs that are growing in the county, or those with skills are in fact relocating out of the county because of the cost of housing. And that's something we've been trying to address. Interestingly, much of, as I'm sure you know, most of the job growth that's been happening is in the high-tech area, which fortunately is high wage, but the county tends to not be, in terms of the various systems, is not training enough people for these high-tech, high-paying jobs, so we've had to address that. Income is really becoming bipolar. The rich are richer, the poor are poorer, figuratively, and that, given the housing situation, is presenting that bipolar problem for us to address. And another area is childcare quality. Affordable childcare is critical for people who are looking to improve their careers, who are looking to work, for that matter, and that that is something we've addressed. And I've spoken about housing before, but in this county, we are among the more expensive ones in the state, thus one of the more expensive ones in the country. The minimum percentage of income that is being spent on housing in our county is 35 percent, and it goes much higher for many of those numbers which are troublesome at, at least. So how do we address these and any number of other programs that are mentioned? I think you have our annual report, you also have our, our year-end review document that, that goes into a lot more depth, depth than I will in our, in our few minutes today. We, as you know, oversee specialized programs. The main avenue for this is through the one-stop job and career centers. But more importantly, we try to confront workforce development needs really head-on, and that's, that's been done this year with our local partners, and we're trying to develop, and I think have successfully developed, both permanent as well as sustainable solutions. Now, one of those areas that we've worked significantly in is the area of community involvement, outreach, advocacy. In the past year, we've called on the community to really continue building what we call a competitive workforce within the county, and that that becomes a competitive advantage for the county. Now, to do that, we've had to upgrade our marketing efforts this year, we've had to increase our outreach to business, and we have approached and, and worked with many of the forward-thinking leaders in our community and in our county. We've sponsored or co-sponsored at least a dozen events this year, including a luncheon with, we co-sponsored with the EDCO where Mayor Rorden, Rorden was a featured speaker and that I had the pleasure of speaking at. And we have held our first annual awards program. The winners are listed in the materials you have, and we recognized what we called workforce champions, that were champions in either collaborative action, that were promoters of lifelong learning, that were people who were removing barriers to employment, and, as well as other supporters of, of a number of the causes we've worked on. And that was a, was a big success. We've implemented the Workforce Investment Scorecard, which you've seen, that really gets to hard numbers and hard measures. The kinds of things we, we do are sometimes difficult to measure, but we've made, I think, tremendous progress in being able to identify the, the return on the investment, if you would, of the, the millions of dollars we spend. And speaking of millions of dollars, when I talked to you last, we talked about trying to find other sources of income and trying to build, build our ability with the declining federal dollars, and I'm very pleased to say that, that almost $3 million, $2.7 million in special grants and special demonstration monies were, were developed this year and have been reinvested back into the county. So we've really, really focused on that year, and I think we've been very successful at A, a fundamental reason, I guess, that the Board exists is to, to not only identify the issues, but to facilitate the management of those issues. And a valuable role our WIB plays is really undertaking the research, undertaking the initiation of conversations and analysis so that we can understand where the gaps are in the community and understand what needs the, the greatest amount of attention. This last year, we elected to focus primarily, not exclusively, but primarily on the healthcare-related area, and that was for a number of reasons. Certainly, we all read every day about the shortage of nurses. It's also a career that has a tremendous career ladder, a tremendous career path for, for opportunity up, and frankly, the longevity or the security of healthcare-related jobs is significant. And so we entered a number of programs on that, and I'm very pleased to report some examples of success. We had 87 new people who wouldn't have been in these programs are in nurse training programs now at, at two of the, the community colleges. And in the CalWorks program, there are 40 people that would not have been there but for these programs, in medical technician training programs. So those are just some, some examples of those success. We also received funding this year, I mentioned some of the extra money we've got, for a biotech education and training program, which we think will aim at those directions the jobs are going now in the county. We also have sponsored a healthcare advisory partnership. We have staff serving on Channel Islands, their Bachelor of Nursing program in, in advisory point, perspective, and we are involved with the Ventura County Community Foundation's Medical Education Subcommittee. So there's some of the ways we're trying to stay on top of that. And another area that I think was particularly rewarding is, in order to keep the, the small business community in the county afloat, we re-instituted, I guess is a way of saying, a program that's been around for a while called the Business Enhancement Program. That's a four-year-old program, and it goes after the 23,000 small businesses in Ventura County, and it helps them in areas such as emergency funding, reorganization, how to best, best approach the market segment, and, and strategic planning at its very heart. And that, we believe, has been very successful. The other area we've turned to is youth, and we've talked about that in the past. This year, the Youth Council's first newsletter debuted in April with a goal of trying to raise awareness around our initiatives, around our programs, around the various activities that the Youth Council is doing, and, and that's really in response to, to the transitioning work we're trying to do with youth to the world of work. The Youth Council developed very strong partnerships, I think, this year with the community, with service providers, in, in order to leverage funds. A couple very specific factoids, if you would, is that between July 1st and June 30th, July 1st of '04 and June 30th of this year, the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard and Port Wayne, Wayneimi, and the service provider, the training, the work-training programs it was, have served 500 kids in, in a county-wide program, and over 200 youth have gone through the work readiness curriculum and certification program, and we've served 120 youth with disabilities who've experienced, I think, some pretty intense training and some very meaningful assistance to get them either to higher education or to the, the careers of their, of their choice. And I talked briefly about our one-stop, one-stop career centers. They are held to a very high standard of service with our service partners in that we oversee and evaluate their activities annually. This year, the job and career centers saw 77,500 people come through their doors to receive services. And this was not only the, the unemployed, but it was also the underemployed, it was the mid-career crisis or middle-aged crisis individual. From any perspective, these people were being served. They were also employers looking for skilled workers, and we think it was a tremendous success there. So, I could go on and on, you've got the materials. I think what I'd want to conclude with is say is that really on behalf of the Board, we are very appreciative of the increased role that you have taken and interest you have taken in what we're doing, increased dialogue we've been able to have, and as a result, we look very, very much forward to our successes going, going into the 2005, 2006 year. I would like to, at this point, introduce someone who's no stranger to any of you, Lynn Jacobs, who has succeeded me and is now the Chair of the Workforce Board. She's going to say a couple words about the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
I can't live without my glasses. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I just wanted to conclude with looking at the future. We had our retreat October 20th, which was quite successful. We had great participation from our Board as well as fascinating speakers, and we've determined three priorities for the year to come. The first one is to develop the job and career centers as the true one-stops for everybody in the county, whether they're employers or employees. So we'll be making them more visible, and you might get the wonderful opportunity of more show and tell from our job and career center managers, who are all terrific. Then, our other priority that I'm very excited about is we're going to work much harder on our connection with their education system. One of the events that we are going to be sponsoring is a forum on March 30th with the School Boards Association, sponsored by the Superintendent of Schools, to really explore more vocational education, K through 12, as well as work readiness programs within the constraints of all the testing that we read about in the papers. So that's going to be a major, major issue, issue for us. And then our third priority is to expand our influence in the community by more strategic partnerships. We've identified a list of associations that we will be working to get our Board members participating in, like the Human Resources Association of Ventura County, the temporary job agencies, so that we are participating with them in developing more effective ways to improve our ability to get people jobs. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions for, for Tom or me, we'll be here for the next three hours.
Questions?
It won't take that long. And this is not so much a question, I had the pleasure of meeting in my office, and one of the things that I brought up that I was interested in, and Ms. Jacobs just brought it up, and that is the, the partnership with the education community. And as some of you know, there were a lot of cuts in the community college district and some of their classes, and what's been brought to my attention time and time again and very recently because of the, my relationship through CAGUS, is that a lot of the water-quality technician jobs, jobs require an education level. They were getting that education through the community college district, those classes have been dropped. And most of the water agencies that I have talked to, approached me specifically just because we worked together somewhere else and said, can you do anything? And I said, no, it's the education system, but yes, I will help, I will talk to the college president that I know very well. And when we brought this up, it seems to be a perfect fit for the WIB to help explore how that training for those technicians could be accomplished, and, and is it a good fit? And I greatly appreciated them jumping up and down and saying, oh, yeah, yeah, maybe, let us look into this, maybe we can do something, because it's going to, it's critical to all.
Because it's critical to all of our agencies. You know, we've got the Watershed Protection District, and you've got Cuyahoga, and, you know, just keep going all through the county. And there is a real problem. Some of the people were three-quarters of the way through their training, and these classes disappeared. So I just want to thank, I know there's been some tensions over the years here and there, but those are gone and over. And I think the path we're both on is really good, and I thank you for jumping in there and at least looking at it.
Right. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Van Burckum.
Perfect.
Really, you really, did I say it right?
Perfect.
You really did an excellent job as Chair. I've been with these programs for at least 30 years. And with the first one was SEDA, I think, and used to receive like $26 million a year. So it's gone down, right, six or seven. But I've never seen a Chair know as much about what this group is doing as you. You really have done an excellent job. You spend a lot of time understanding what you're up to. So my congratulations to you. And Lynn, I met with Lynn the other day. She is absolutely a very gifted person. We're fortunate to have her as the new Chair, replacing such an outstanding Chair. She really thinks things through. She gives me a lot of confidence that we're on the right track. I've talked with her about jobs for people who have been served injunction notices, and I'm working with that population by going door-to-door, talking with the families. And she really is sensitive about this. And then our staff. Our staff is outstanding. It's a breath of fresh air that you have brought to all of this, and so I feel very comfortable with it.
Other comments or questions? Supervisor Park?
Thank you. It's really neat to see things getting accomplished. I think I was still with the city when I was pushing to get nurse, you know, we need more colleges that teach for nursing and talk to Cal State Channel Islands and watching this bloom. I think it's wonderful. We find out where there is a demand for employees and being able to help fill that scrape. But there's also the other side of the picture, which is where are you going to have a supply of people that need jobs? And, you know, looking at that, it's interesting, some of the statistics I've heard, the people that are leaving California, migrating out of California, actually have higher education levels than those who are immigrating into California. So that's kind of an interesting thing, that while the people coming in and our population demographics are changing, that we're having a less educated population. So we need to address that. And then also looking, just from this conference we had on the senior summit, we have a lot of baby boomers getting older. And while they're leaving the marketplace, Dr. Watkins was saying that they can't afford to, you know, stay retired anymore because we live a lot longer. And they're a wonderful resource to come back into the workplace, and particularly with your educational emphasis, the education system and vocational, the idea of being able to bring in that workforce back into the workforce and using them even if it's not on a full-time basis. But I think that's important to look at. And then also, finally, I know that you have done well with helping disabled youth and getting, helping them to get placed in jobs. I was reading in the Los Angeles Times, a whole emphasis on the mentally ill and getting them into the workforce, those that are functioning, and how much better it is for those individuals. But also that they do play a role in society that can help, even if it's at lower-level employment. So I hope, as you look out there, you also look at adults with mental illness that can be placed into the workforce, too. Thank you for your work.
Comments?
Just very briefly, had the pleasure of meeting with Lynn and our new executive director. And I really applaud you for trying to narrow it down three things and try to really do that. And I just want to say publicly, I suggested to you how challenging it will be to make effective change with the education system. And that's not a criticism of anybody. It just really is, and I just want to get that out there. So I will be very anxious to sort of hear your report and understand, you know, what kind of challenges and difficulties you will have when you try to move into a big system like that and try to do that. But really want to compliment the tone of the meeting that we had and just the emphasis that you guys are throwing at the Workforce Investment Board, I think is very good, and I really support it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate your work. Thank you. Thank you for bringing the report to us, and thank you, all of you who serve on the board, for your volunteer efforts. Thank you. It's a receiving file action.
Receiving file?
Motion and second hearing, no objection. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, as directed in our agenda review, we will move now to item 33. And item 33, Mr. Johnston, you're going to give us a report back on the examination of the transfer of leases.
Madam Chair, members of the board, last week Supervisor Flynn suggested that there was something going on in the harbor that sounded to me, you know, on the verge of a felony. But later, when the newspaper came out, there were some corrections made with regard to accusations against the Alamar Corporation. I spent the better part of last week, as did the county council, going over the lease, all of the things on the transfer. Absent some additional information, we conclude that there was nothing improper about that transaction and that, in light of the statement made publicly, that a sweetheart deal was made and that there was a payoff involved. I failed to be able to uncover the payoff. I thought possibly at the time that it was the suggestion that the Alamar Company had dropped an objection to the boating center in return for preferential treatment on leases. But when the newspaper came out, and I, unless Supervisor Flynn was misquoted, he said that he misspoke and that the Alamar Company did not drop their objection. Because the findings are that the Alamar Group has been a great supporter of the boating center. In fact, I don't know that they originated the idea, but they were certainly an early and continuous supporter of the project. So I can find no consideration for the corrupt bargain. I mean, there was no, I don't know what the exchange was. We didn't have the authority to give Alamar anything that they weren't entitled to anyway, and they didn't give us anything that they hadn't provided for the last number of years. So my conclusion is, is that we either need to explain it better and provide some evidence, or that, I think, an apology is due to the people, particularly the ones that were named in the newspaper article as having, quote, "cut a deal." Maybe it's simply to explain what the deal is, and maybe that it's not, as I was concerned, that we possibly had a felony on our hands. But the report that I faxed out to you yesterday goes through item by item. There is an addendum to it from the county council, who goes through the entire lease transaction. And then attached to the county council's report is a communication with Mr. Jim Astomo, who is a member of Supervisor Flynn's staff. As near as I can tell, it's an undated communication. And it was simply a, I guess you could call it a complaint or a disenchantment from people associated with Alamar a couple of years ago, when they were not the ones selected for the Channel Islands Marina lease. I didn't find anything in that letter that would indicate that there was, anybody made any kind of a deal. That letter certainly raised a number of questions in my mind as to what the communication was all about and why it went where it went and why no one in the county, other, apparently than Mr. Astomo, received copies of it. But that wasn't my assignment to investigate. So my conclusion is, is that there, at this point, we find no basis for the accusation and that we should be cautious in making those kinds of statements when we are damaging people's reputations and businesses who can suffer financial losses.
Madam Chair, just have a question for Mr. Johnston. Just want to ask you about the first paragraph of your conclusion. "I find no basis for Supervisor Flynn's allegations, other than a pattern of harassment of staff because of his dissatisfaction with the board's majority decision." Could you elaborate on that? Let us know what your...
Well, that's obviously an opinion, but I would submit to you this morning in the boardroom, you saw part of the technique, which is that if we respond properly to the supervisor, we are praised publicly. And if we do not, then we suffer the consequences of remarks and, well, you know, sort of the politics of destruction. I can give you a list of people if you wish to interview any of them. I think that it's unfortunate, and I'm not quite sure why, but my only conclusion could be that this connects directly with the continuing disagreement amongst your board over the boating center. A majority of the board made a decision, directed my office, and I directed the harbor management to carry out that decision. And it appears until we drop our recommendation or support for that decision and are less successful in implementing that decision, that the management of the harbor will continue to be bashed publicly.
Do we have speaker cards, Madam Chair?
Two. Other comments or questions at this time, public board members? We do have speaker cards.
Madam Chair, I will have comments after we hear from the speakers.
All right. Michael Kootnik. Oh, he stepped out. All right.
Michael asked if I could take a spot. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Just go briefly. Frankly, when I heard about this, when I first heard about this, I was shocked. I couldn't really imagine that I was reading this in the paper and that this had occurred. I've had a professional business relationship with Randy Short and Almar for many years and have had the pleasure of dealing with the county for a whole lot more than that. And Lynn Krieger and her staff seem to be doing everything that they have been tasked with doing by you, the board. So I have nothing to say, other than the fact that I'm amazed that this is in front of us today. So I hope that you can resolve it.
Thank you. Stan Mormon?
I'm not here to bash anyone, anyone. I'm just here to state some concrete facts. I was born and raised in Oxnard. I learned how to sail, and I learned how to surf in the Channel Islands Harbor and on Hollywood Beach. I knew Martin Smith also. Martin Smith, I consider a great mentor, and I really wish to God he were here right now. One thing he would certainly suggest is that I not stand here and talk to you. One thing he would suggest is that I just let my lawyers handle things. Unfortunate, my lawyers were unable to be here today on short notice, so I came instead. And I'll try to keep my remarks point simple. On September 11th, 2002, my company sent to each one of you a proposal, a cash proposal, to purchase the Casa Serena and all of the slips. We would redevelop that at our expense, entirely our expense. My partners invested over $200,000 in planning, models, research, project proposals, budgeting, all the things necessary to do a good job. We attempted to get the help of Ms. Krieger and the Harbor Department to help us facilitate the negotiations to take over the Casa Serena. We were totally unsuccessful in getting any help out of her office until we intervened with Supervisor Flynn. We had a meeting in his office in January of 2003, where we basically spent an hour and a half discussing how to watch paint dry, and nothing came of it. During that meeting, we did discuss Fisherman's Wharf for a very short period of time. Ms. Krieger told us she couldn't even find out who owned the Casa Serena, let alone Fisherman's Wharf. Yet, and I've spoken to you about this, Mr. Johnson, more than once. I've phoned each and every one of you, and only a few of you have ever had the courtesy to call me back. As a native of Ventura County...
I did speak with you for about an hour and a half on the phone, though, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Uninterrupted, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate it. However, you also told me you would be returning my calls shortly after you talked to Ms. Krieger and the department, that you were going to get to the bottom of what happened, and that you would find out why the proposal process seemed so rigged against a local developer. You never called me back. It's been over six months. The Harbor Department told us that we would have an answer on Fisherman's Wharf within just a few months of a meeting that took place over a year ago. Nothing, and no one has called. Fisherman's Wharf is still a dump. We were prepared to build a marine aquarium center at our expense. We were willing to completely rebuild Fisherman's Wharf if necessary. We made cash offers to do so in the Harbor Department office amongst a whole bunch of, I'm not sure who, had say or authority over us. But I do know that nothing has happened in the last year. I know that Ms. Krieger gets paid somewhere near $10,000 a month. I know the Harbor Department costs almost $750 an hour to run. You, Ms. Long, actually said to me in my office, in the presence of the mayor of the city of Oxnard, when I asked you, "Why does it take so long to get anything out of the Harbor Department?", you said they were distracted by litigation. For eight hours a day, five days a week, for 240-plus days a year? That's a flimsy argument. I just want a shot. I want to fix my community. And when somebody who's born here, unlike most of you, I actually was born here, and when somebody gives you the chance to take and redevelop your mentor's properties, what he made a great harbor of, more out of his own pocket than with the help of any harbor bureaucrat, I was pretty impressed. I was really happy. But in the last two and a half years of this process, I don't know why anybody would do business with the harbor. I can't imagine why anybody would do business with the Harbor Department here. And as I said, we've made phone calls repeatedly. I've had lawyers and consultants. We've spent thousands of dollars, and we don't even get the courtesy of a returned phone call. So I don't know what you guys want to do at the harbor, but best of luck. And no, Ms. Krieger, they won't end up in the trash. The models will be on display on the 19th floor of my alarator's office at the Morgan Stanley Tower. Thank you.
William Hare?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, he's gone. I, too, was born in Ventura County some 70-plus years ago, and so I've been around as well as the previous speaker. For almost the last 30 years, Harry Nelson was a dear friend, client, and colleague. And Joyce Nelson continues, his widow, continues to be a friend, client, colleague. Randy Short has been with the Almar operations for some 18 years, and I have dealt with Randy on a one-on-one basis for all of those 18 years. Almar and its various entities operate marinas throughout California and in other states and in other countries. There are some 18, 19 marinas that are operated. You've not seen a single tenant from any of the Almar operations here complaining. You've seen former tenants complain about management. But I would invite you to look at the Almar operations at Channel Islands, at Ventura. And by the way, Ventura, it's been cited as a very active harbor. And I would submit to you that having a first-class marina, such as Ventura Isle Marina, owned and operated by Almar, is one of the catalysts for that marina being what it is today. Now, going back to the accusations that Supervisor Flynn made on October 25th, he also made the same accusations on your meeting on September 20th, when you were considering the consulting contract on Colbert, on the environmental review and coastal work. Those accusations are serious, serious accusations, and they continue to cause harm to my client. Today, you've seen part of that during your public comment, where people come in and talk about it. It was orchestrated, because sitting next to these people, as I understand, it was one of Mr. Flynn's administrative assistants orchestrating... one of Mr. Flynn's administrative assistants orchestrating the complaints that you were hearing about the harbor and about the things that were going on. Quite frankly, we are looking at our legal options, because our quiet enjoyment of our leaseholds have been affected, not only at Channel Islands, but at Ventura, and it's throughout the state. This kind of a thing hits the press, and it's the accusation that is remembered, not the ultimate resolution of it. And we applaud Mr. Johnston's report to your board done on very short notice, and Mr. Claybon's report as well. They are very well done. But I'll tell you this, John. Harry Nelson is spinning in his grave as a result of your accusations, and it is injuring him personally, it's injuring his family, and it's injuring his business. And we don't take the accusations lightly, and this is not the end of it. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. There are no further public comment cards submitted on this item. I will move to the board.
I have a question for Mr. Johnson. You spent an hour and a half with the gentleman back here. I know that--
And I did return his phone call.
Thank you. I know that we have an interesting situation in the harbor that consistently comes up. We have competitive bidding for these various leases that we have out there. And when you have a competitive bidding environment, somebody wins and somebody loses. And we frequently hear from the people who lose, and their argument almost consistently is, "The process wasn't fair." In your analysis of this, after you spoke with the gentleman for an hour and a half, I just want to hear, what's your analysis of this relative to the normal pattern that we have of competitive process, somebody gets selected, or somebody, for some reason, doesn't go through the competitive process and wants to get selected in some other way, and then we hear from them? How does this fit into that pattern?
Well, my conversation with Mr. Mormon, he characterized it as a process so rigged that locals couldn't participate. And I attempted to explain to him what I knew about the process and said I would look into it. And what I discovered when I looked into it is that Mr. Mormon and his associates were interested in acquiring a leasehold that belonged to someone else, not to the county. And they certainly had the right and knew who those people were, I presume. If they didn't, Supervisor Flynn certainly did, that they could have gone to that individual to see if they could do business. Apparently, they did not. This particular confusion seems to come up over and over when people keep talking about something with the county, such as the Casa Serena, the lobster trap, and a variety of other leaseholds in the harbor, as though the county were still in possession of those. That leaseholds were sold, that is a property interest, and the individuals are referred to talk to those who own the leaseholds. It is not unlike this situation where the Almar Corporation or partnership with, I don't know all the names, the Oxnard Group, acquired a leasehold that belonged to someone else. The person holding the leasehold has the right to sell it. It doesn't come under the public bidding process, but your board, or previous boards, did put provisions in to say that when that owner comes forward and asks to transfer their interest in the leasehold, that your board has the right to review it and to approve it. And as the county council has pointed out, you cannot unreasonably withhold the approval. Mr. Mormon pointed out that he and his partners had spent considerable money preparing and analyzing the project. I myself have been in the development business. That is the seed money that the developer puts forth when they are trying to put a project together. No one gave them an option. No one gave them any reason to believe that their investment was going to pay off. It was simply something they did as business people, and I applaud them for making that effort. But our office didn't have anything that we could do about that, and I explained that on the phone. I have not heard back from Mr. Mormon or his associates since then, so I presume that he understood the situation. As far as the allegation that the harbor department didn't know who owned the Fisherman's Wharf, that is not true.
Sir, Mr. Mormon, you cannot speak. This is before the board at this time. Please refrain from making comments.
My other question, then, is based on what you heard here from those comments. Does it change your, after hearing that testimony, does it change your conclusions in any way in terms of the investigation of the serious charges made at Almar and, by implication, county staff, somebody, in terms of creating this payoff, sweetheart?
All we have to go on, unless Supervisor Flynn suggests that the newspapers didn't get it right, is that Supervisor Flynn continues to believe that a, quote, "deal was cut" between two individuals, and I will not mention their names, but it's in the newspaper. And if he will produce something that will support that so that I'll know where to go, I would be happy to continue the investigation. But I can find no motive, means, nor opportunity for what is being suggested has happened. And it seems to me, at some point, your board's going to have to decide how much of county council's time, my time, and the harbor management's time is to be spent on these kinds of things. The reason for my comment in there about the harassment is that I suspect that this all goes away if we would just see the light and fail in our duty to carry out your board's request to pursue the Boating Safety Instructional Center.
Thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Right. Let me take some water first. Well, Bill Hare, I was born here, too, probably a little bit after you were born here. Would you say that? You know, my job here at the board is to protect the public trust. And if I see an issue that is very clear, to me at least, that's a violation of that trust, then I have no other option than to bring the issue out to the public. I asked for a closed session, I think, a little over two weeks ago, and we had a closed session, and evaluated Mr. Johnson's tenure in this job, and his oversight of specifically the harbor. And the reaction from those who heard me, at least some of them, and Mr. Johnson, was very negative, very negative, didn't even listen, really. It kind of reminded me of the times that I've written emails after emails after emails to Mr. Johnson, "Look into this, look into this, please help. We need some help at that harbor." And basically, he never gave me an answer, never, never an answer, to give me some kind of a comfort feeling. So the reason I brought this out publicly last Tuesday, it was a week ago today, is that I really had no choice, because I wasn't really given a fair hearing in closed session, not a fair hearing at all. Interruptions and comments and snide comments and comments that were kind of patronizing, those kinds of comments. So I decided, because of that, because of the negative reaction, I have to go public with this issue, and that's what I've done, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. Mr. Johnson kind of has his role mixed up, I think. He, today, and in that closed session, really graded the graders. We're the graders here, the five supervisors. And he, I guess, sees himself as a sixth supervisor. He's able to grade each one of us, and he graded me. And it wasn't a very good grade. But is that ethical for an appointed person to grade an elected official, as he has done? Let me read to you a couple of things, and I appreciate, Madam Chair, allowing me to go into this in detail. I received an email from Johnny Johnston on the 29th of this month, dated 10/29/2005. "John, I am reviewing the facts surrounding the lease transfer that you characterized in your board comments last Tuesday as a sweetheart deal, and strongly implied there was some sort of corrupt bargain involved. If you have anything more on this subject that you wish to share, I would appreciate receiving it as soon as possible so that I may consider it before I report back to the board on Tuesday. So far, I have not been able to discover the motive, the means or opportunity for anyone to have committed the crime you are suggesting occurred. Before I spend a lot more time of taxpayers' money on what appears to be a wild goose chase, I was wondering if you were, as you want to say," I don't know where you ever got that--
In this room.
--"just doing a little pandering." You know, if you look up the definition of pandering, and if you have any knowledge of Shakespeare, you ought to know what that word really means. So I'm disappointed in this. Why would I want to share any further information with the CEO when he writes something like this to me? But look at the letter before the board. By the way, here is the issue that appeared in our packet. If you look at it, it's pretty hard to understand what in the world is all this about? Was the public given fair notice in this agenda item? See it? So yesterday, late in the afternoon, we receive, in my office, and my staff is all here today, we receive a letter dated November 1st, 2005, without really any time to really understand what Mr. Johnson is saying in this letter. Lately, we received it very late. And even though Mr. Johnson asked for more information, and he asked for more here in this letter, he went on the radio station yesterday morning, very early, I don't know if it was recording or what, he already had drawn his conclusion. Why should I give him any more information? He's already concluded that there's no deal here made. And think of the language that he uses in talking with an elected official. Number one, he's recommending the greater, quote, "greater," who's an appointed official, I'm elected, he's recommending, number one, Supervisor Flynn should either explain and provide evidence of the very serious charges he has made, or withdraw them and apologize to those whose reputation his remarks may have injured. It's coming from him. The board appointed Mr. Johnson to investigate the case. Mr. Johnson is the CEO. The board, in effect, appointed the CEO to investigate himself.
Ah.
That seemed, Madam Chair, if I may finish with Mr. Johnson. I know he's upset, but I want to finish. I'm really, it's not easy to bring things up like this. I don't think in my close-to-30-year career I've ever brought an issue up like this, never, never. That's my history. But I've never seen a harbor so mismanaged by our CEO as I see it today. People came to me over this issue. They came to me. Why did Almar get this transfer when Almar was so upset? My question, they were so upset because the Channel Islands lease did not go to them, very upset. We have documentation to show that. And so people came to me and said, and asked me, "What happened here?" Because Almar then appeared at BISC hearings before the Coastal Commission, asking people to stand up and say, "How many support the BISC on the West Side?" And they stood up. So the mood of the representatives of Almar changed radically. And what caused that change? I'm telling you today, and I'm telling you, Mr. Hare, too, that the public trust is very important to me. When we use scare tactics, as Mr. Johnson has used in his response here, it even makes it more difficult to come and reveal a situation. It makes it difficult to allow, to cause, to allow the sun to shine on Channel Islands Harbor so that we know something about what's going on. It's a difficult thing to do. But my job is to protect the public trust. If I have to do this, like we're doing it now, and I don't get cooperation from the chief administrative office, and I don't get letters, answers to my letters, then we have some difficulty. I'm talking to the people of Ventura County this morning. I'm not talking with my colleagues or Mr. Johnson. I'm talking to the people of the county. I want to come wherever you want me to go, and I want to explain what I think is going on here. And the key question is, the key question is, who initiated the request from Westbrook to separate out the slips from the lobster trap, the apartments, Bahia, and the hotel? Why were those slips separated? For what reason? For what reason? That's the question. Now, I'm not going to go into further information I have this morning, because with this board, I've been unable to get a fair hearing here. Mr. Johnson has been so derogatory, it's hard to sit up here next to a guy who just said the kinds of things he has said about me. But here I am. I will go and I will talk about this issue wherever I have to talk about it. It deserves to be talked about. Channel Islands Harbor is a mess. Everyone knows that. For years, people have been saying, "What is wrong with the harbor?" They've asked me that. The harbor's in my district. They asked me that. So I have a kind of a choice to make, and I'm going to make it fairly soon, and that is, where do I go next? Where do I go next to have an investigation of this issue? So that's the question mark that I have, and that's the question mark that I want to share with board members. Where do I go next? Do I go to the district attorney? Do I go to the grand jury? Or do I go to the Attorney General? It's a serious issue for me. I know you want to react. Madam Chair--
I'm supporting you.
--if you could ask Mr. Johnson to kind of calm down a little bit. So that's my last point that I'll make. I'm going to continue on. I'm not going to be frightened. I'm going to continue on, because the issue deserves it. Public trust. When I raise my hand and take the oath, which I've done eight times, I raise my hand to protect the public trust and to follow the Constitution of the State of California and the United States of America. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Michael.
I understand that the CEO is probably feeling the need to say something, but in order to deflect the elected versus appointed, I'm going to go next. And I am elected. I find it unprofessional, I find it unconscionable, that Mr. Flynn has made the allegations that he has made and that he continues to make them. Mr. Flynn has been privy to all of the information that the rest of us are privy to. I find it interesting that he says he doesn't understand why the harbor is such a mess when he's been the roadblock, at least the last few years. Everything that we have tried to do as a majority of the board-- Sir, if you don't stop it, I'm going to ask the chair to have you silenced. Your turn came, now it's mine. I want you to pay attention, because I believe this has to have been said for the last few years. We-- We all, in public hearing after public hearing, and in closed session after closed session, went over and over and over all of the information that finally led to the majority decision of this board, in all of the items that the supervisor has brought up and questioned. I find it unconscionable for anyone to accuse and make the accusations that he has made, and then to sit here pompously saying, he's not going to share that information. This is a public hearing. I believe that the public that he says he cares about has a right to know. What I have found over the years is that Mr. Flynn, if you don't agree with him, will go and find people to come here and support his opinion regardless of whether there was a majority of the board or not. He did it at the BISC hearings in front of the Coastal Commission, and he has done it time and time again. Talk about a waste of taxpayers' dollars. There's where the waste is. It is unprofessional. I believe that the failing of this board recently has been to allow this sort of behavior. Well, I'm not going to be an enabler any longer. I want it known that I support, and I believe a majority of this board, support Mr. Johnston and his management of all of the county that's under his purview. I certainly support the harbor director and all of her personnel in the way that they have managed. I took the time to talk to some people this week, and you know, we heard from three disgruntled people or four this morning, everybody I talked to is very happy with Almar. They're thrilled to see the changes that are being made. Now, I don't know, maybe these people were the bad guys that were, quote, unquote, cleaned up for the enjoyment of the rest of the boaters in the different marinas. I suspect that that is probably where we have found these naysayers. But I believe that just because Mr. Flynn feels he has lost his power in, over the harbor of the good old boy years of 20 and 30 years ago, he made the allusion to that today by accusing someone of making that comment, that that's why we have all of this, these issues that we deal with over and over and over again, odd nauseam. It does not benefit the public, and it certainly is a waste of taxpayer dollars, to go through these dog and pony shows every week or so. And for someone in our position to make the accusations and insinuations that have been made without the willingness to back it up publicly is not acceptable. And I would like to put a motion before this board that for the protection of the county and for the protection of staff, and to minimize our risk of liability, that I want the CEO, as uncomfortable as it may be, to be the conduit for any and all conversations and meetings with anyone associated with the harbor and Mr. Flynn. That that staff is not allowed to meet alone with Mr. Flynn, that there must be the CEO or his designee present. Therefore, we won't have these accusations again. And I think that it's incumbent upon this board, that is a motion, if I could get a second, it's incumbent upon us to protect the county, its risk liability, our reputation, and the reputation of the people who work so hard for the majority of this board.
You got a second, Ed?
I'll second that.
Okay. We can handle that, I guess, either now or later, but I believe that we have the possibility of harassment and other issues that could come forward if it had not been for the professionalism of the staff and the quality of the personalities of the staff at the harbor, I think we'd have already been in trouble. And that's why I've made that motion, and I hope that the board will support for our protection and that of staff.
Supervisor Bennett?
I'd like to offer why I'm seconding the motion, but I'd also like to check with the clerk. You were going to give me something to do a PowerPoint with. Yeah. Okay.
PowerPoint?
I do. All right. Here it comes.
Could you clarify the motion while we're waiting for the setup? Specifically, that Supervisor Flynn would have to go through the CEO's office to get his information regarding harbor issues instead of going to harbor staff?
Correct. And that they should not meet with him face to face without someone else in the office, the CEO or one of his designees. And it's based on the fact that these accusations have been made before, innuendo and insinuation have happened before, and I am not willing to put anybody in that position, and I'm not willing to put the county in that position.
I would offer, I think, part of the motion that I'm most supportive of is the concept that particularly Ms. Krieger should not meet alone with Supervisor Flynn because of the potential liability that that could expose us to. And so I don't know what I need to do to fire up this PowerPoint.
Somebody's inspired a PowerPoint.
All right. Great. That's not the slide, the first slide, please. There we go. This all started with this charge made last week. This is the exact text of the charge made last week here at the dais by Supervisor Flynn. Said, "At that time, I said that it was a sweetheart deal. I still maintain that because Almar opposed the BISC, and once that opposition was withdrawn, then there was the payoff. And I think that in all seriousness, seriousness, happened," just a syntax, you know, comment that he made. "I wouldn't make that charge publicly unless I really believed it." Now, within hours after doing that, what do I have to do to go to the next slide? I think I do that. There we go. I want to highlight, this is the last sentence there. "There was the payoff, and I think that in all seriousness, seriousness, it happened. I wouldn't make a charge like that publicly unless I really believed it." Within hours of that, the newspaper says that Mr. Flynn recanted and said, no, that wasn't it. Now, on the one hand, he emphasizes how serious the charge is and how sure he is of his charge for him to sit here at the dais and make it, and then within hours say, no, it wasn't because Almar changed their mind on the BISC. And I think that almost strikes me as comical if it wasn't so tragic in terms of what it is, what it is doing and where it is taking us. And it reminded me of this important point that I think we all, all of us in particular up here on the dais, that have been entrusted with the public with a certain amount of power to act on their behalf, and that's this quote from Abraham Lincoln. "Most anyone can withstand adversity, but to test a man's character, give him power." And I would offer that the power to sit up here and make reckless charges that have no evidence backing them up, that are, it is completely unethical to do that. It is very clearly, in my mind, not what is being portrayed, which is an attempt to stand up for good government, attempt to protect the public, but rather, it is being done for political purposes. It is self-serving, and I would offer that it fits the pattern that is one that I'm most concerned with. And that is a pattern that staff, if they give their professional opinion about what should happen, and that professional opinion happens to be something that the supervisor disagrees with, you are at risk of character assassination. And this is, this concern goes well beyond the charge that took place here just last week on this dais. And I would emphasize a charge that Supervisor Flynn himself said, I would not make this charge if I wasn't certain it happened. That was, he was, a real emphasis there, to make that charge at staff, and then to have this thing sit at this state. Next thing that I, it goes way beyond that, because I believe our staff too often is harassed by the supervisor when they do not give the supervisor what the supervisor wants, and instead gives them, gives him their professional opinion. And that is putting the county at risk, and therefore is one of the reasons I support the motion. It is also one of the reasons why I wholeheartedly support the unusual action of Mr. Johnson to respond in the way that Mr. Johnson did. Because what I believe Mr. Johnson is doing, I have great respect for the process where we disagree, and I have repeatedly appealed to the supervisors that, you know, we just have a fundamental disagreement on this, three to two. We ought to just say, the board majority has ruled, we have so many other important things that we need to throw our energy on, so many other important things that we need our creativity and our ability to work together on, that we ought to just let it go as long as it's three to two and move on. And that has been repeatedly rejected by Supervisor Flynn as we keep going and going and going with this. So what we have is, it's perfectly fine for a supervisor to say, I'm concerned about that staff member and what they're doing, et cetera, to Mr. Johnson. It is not perfectly fine to put them in a hostile work environment. And that's where we have to draw the line. It's fine for a competition of ideas to take place up here on the board and the dais. It's even fine for a competition of ideas to take place between us and our staff. I welcome the opportunities when staff says, Supervisor Bennett, I just disagree with you on this. That's exactly what good government's all about. If you want to talk about good government, it's not about baseless charges creating a hostile environment. It is about trying to have honest, free dialogue where there is disagreement and the disagreement is respected. And that is falling apart as a result of this. So it takes great courage to do what Mr. Johnson did, but I don't believe Mr. Johnson had any other choice when one of his staff members has been, for such a long period of time, been repeatedly harassed, and repeatedly, I believe, put in essentially a hostile work environment. He has no choice except to say to the supervisor, who is one of five people, his boss is the Board of Supervisors, his boss is not any one of us, but he has a responsibility to say, you are putting the county at risk by this behavior. This behavior should stop. And if he believes that, I think he has an obligation to say it, even though it is at great risk to him to do that, and I applaud, appreciate, and respect him for the report that he's given us here at this point in time. Sorry, but this is an important issue, a few more points that I want to make. The charge that was made here from the dais last week, and the long pattern of the harassment of staff that is not doing the supervisor's bidding, damages us in three ways. One, it creates that environment where professional staff opinion is not, does not freely flow to us, and it creates an environment where staff legitimately could bring legal charges against us for creating a hostile work environment. Two, we have liability issues, as represented by Mr. Hare. When we make a charge like that, we have no evidence to back it up, and they are out there getting articles that then get broadcast all around the state, even sent up to the governor's office. The day the newspaper article came out last week, the charge, the governor's office had received a copy of that article. And they then have to deal with that, with a charge in this situation. I think that the people of Ventura County's sense of fair play is you can't have a charge like that made and not have any evidence, because you have no ability to refute the charge. Somebody wants to say, hey, there's a corrupt deal, and I'm not going to tell you why it's a corrupt deal. We have been stonewalled for the whole week. Now we have this disingenuous thing that because you've come up with your conclusion, I won't give you the information. We didn't get, that charge should have come with the facts at the time. That charge should have been provided immediately after, I mean, those facts should have been provided at least immediately afterwards. Mr. Johnson didn't write his report until yesterday. If there were facts or evidence, et cetera, they should have been presented. The third thing that I would offer gets to this issue of the harbor that is out there that I think is very important for the public to understand. We saw an example of this already here. But it damages this county because it is damaging our ability to attract appropriate business professionals for the taxpayers of Ventura County to partner with. And by that, I mean to sign leases for business professionals to operate businesses in the harbor that the residents of Ventura County benefit from, that the taxpayers of Ventura County benefit from. This is damaging our ability to attract those people to come forward and do that work here in the harbor. And if I could, I would just thank you, I'm on my last. The harbor is a complex organization to operate. If you just take one lease, it is usually 100 pages, 200 pages long, lots of complicated issues in there. It is easy and it is right for anybody who wants to sow confusion to take any one of those complex things, come up with a nice soundbite and say, there was no RFP done on this issue, and not mention the fact that it would have been illegal for us to do an RFP on this issue. We saw that earlier today. But instead, you get the soundbite, no RFP done on this issue. It's a really easy soundbite to make to say, the staff report is inadequate. I would offer, we just sat here and listened to the Workforce Investment Board on the issue right before this, that spends millions of taxpayer dollars, and they mentioned that they evaluate their one-stop shopping centers annually. It would have been very easy if I had an axe to grind with Workforce Investment Board to say, annually? You mean you let them go a whole year before you evaluate them? Why not every six months? Why not every three months? I would just offer that as an example. You can take a complicated issue and you can always say, it's not, it hasn't been, there's not enough information presented, et cetera. That is particularly true when you have a competitive bidding environment where you have six or seven high-profile, well-vested interests that want something. They know how to push every button, and it is perfectly legitimate for them to come into this room. I applaud the gentleman who came. It's perfectly legitimate for them, because that's what keeps us honest, to say, hey, I think I didn't get a fair shake, because then we check and make sure we got a fair shake. That's legitimate. But we have to recognize that just because somebody comes and says they didn't get a fair shake, has, may not have any basis in fact in terms of whether they didn't get a fair shake. It may be that they were just the bidder, they got outbid, got out hustled, et cetera, by somebody else, and they don't like it, and they therefore want to make the charge that there was some unfair process that was out there. If that appropriate process, to say, hey, you know, they want to come to us, that's what makes running a harbor complicated from county government, if that appropriate process is complicated by a supervisor who makes reckless, and I would offer self-serving, unethical charges, now we have a real problem. Because if you have that normal tension complicated by a supervisor making these reckless and inappropriate charges, it makes it very difficult for us to move forward, very difficult for us to get the harbor moved where I think we all want it to move. And then the same person turns around and says, you know, the harbor's not making any progress. The same person that is throwing all the roadblocks to keep us from moving, then turns around and uses the fact that we're not moving to say that we have a problem. So we found that, we found that this morning. So because of that, I strongly support the motion that at a minimum, we have to protect our staff, and that Supervisor Flynn shouldn't meet alone, because I don't know what will be alleged that a staff member said unless we have Mr. Johnson or his representative there also in that situation. So I strongly support it, and I would also end with this. If a supervisor cannot support this motion, then at a minimum, a supervisor should abstain. Because otherwise, I believe a supervisor voting no against this motion is saying it is okay to create this kind of work environment where it's more than just challenging and questioning, it is actual character assassination that unfortunately takes place. Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I think we have a definite public relations problem at the harbor. And what's going on at the Board of Supervisors here? And what's going on at the board of supervisors here is not doing us as a county good. And I know there is frustration, there always will be, from those who don't get accepted for an RFP, but I, and I voted against the BISC. But I, the only thing I disagree with what I've heard today is that this is being caused by the BISC. I am someone who voted against the BISC, but I voted for everything else, Almar, Vintage Marina. So I disagree with that as being the source of this problem. But I do see this as an issue of process. I have actually appreciated the ability of Vintage to allow, and the board particularly, to allow for some changes in their lease when they came forward. To me, that was an appropriate way to be able to get my issues addressed. We're able to put a minimum in the amount of small boats, for example, that will remain allowed for small boat leases. So I think that coming to the board of supervisors and working with the majority has to be the way that we do it, and I do find this to be counterproductive. And I also wanted to just, since really what the issue here that's been brought forward has been characterized as the job performance of our CEO, I just have to say that I have tremendous admiration for our CEO and that I have had experiences with other CEOs that haven't been that good, but in no way would I ever have brought it out in public. This is a personnel issue that quite rightfully, I believe, belongs in a closed session because you're dealing with people, and to have a public, you know, lashing, I think is completely inappropriate. And with that, I also want to thank our CEO because we did have a closed session where he requested that this become an issue for the public so that there isn't this, you know, failure to disclose. He wanted to have this open, and I think that takes a lot of courage and guts. And I'm sorry that we have to go here today, but it is at his request, and so we are doing that. And I hope that, as Supervisor Bennett says, that we will be able to move on. I don't like the idea of accusations and I'm seeing from what the information I've gotten that there isn't any backing for these accusations. And I would hope that we can move on and start working towards bettering the public relation aspects that we have at the harbor. I do think we are moving towards seeing the harbor improve. We just approved a contract, a lease today, that's going to see a building, new building and improvement there, and we have to continue working in that direction. Regarding the motions, the last comment, I can understand the issue that we don't want to have our staff harassed. I don't want to have staff harassed, and so I could support having, you know, basically a witness or whatever with the CEO's office present, but I don't want that to deny the supervisor any ability or access to information. So I would just ask that if that is implemented, that we allow for no longer than like a day turnover, weekday turnover in his ability to get access. I don't think it should amount to delay.
As a second, I'd be comfortable with that modification.
Supervisor Flynn?
Madam Chair, thank you for letting me wind up here. I think the issue that I have and that I believe in is that I have cause. I have cause to go forward with this issue. The reason for not going forward with it here is that it completely is a deaf ear to it. You heard the people here this morning. You know, this involves public land. The public, the taxpayers, the people who live in Ventura County own the harbor. It's public land and public water. So when you have a transfer, as this happened to be, a transfer to a part of the lease separated, the SLIF separated, and you're dealing with $3 million that was paid for this, and the county received nothing from it, nothing, nothing from it, the taxpayers in this county are the losers. And trust, public trust, I have to protect that. It's difficult to do. You've heard it here. As far as harassment, that's baloney. I don't know where that ever came from. That is pure baloney. The motion does not bother me, nor the second, because I'm not going to talk to staff anyhow. I'm not going to talk with Johnny Johnston anymore about this issue. Why should I? He's already said what his position is. But he said it rather cruelly, I must say, but he said it. So I have to go with the cause that I have to protect the public's ownership of that harbor.
Mr. Johnson wants to speak. Mr. Johnson?
Do you vote on your motion? Or do I want to comment on remarks about my performance?
Okay, all right. We have a motion on the table. Well, then I'll make comments I have. I'm going to support the motion, and I think what concerns me greatly is that all of this has put us at great risk, us being the taxpayers, at great risk for litigation from the accusations that have not been substantiated. And you have a deaf ear only if you've received the information and you refuse to accept it or listen to it. We haven't received any information that substantiates the accusations that have been made. We are at great risk from the investment of the Leasy who has the, who went through full disclosure, full due process. This board decided to separate the land from the water issues. It wasn't anybody, it wasn't any harbor director or harbor staff. This board made that decision. Everything we've dealt with on this harbor has come into the board's discussion, full disclosure, repeated meetings, report outs, public meetings, public meetings. I mean, there's, if any area in this county under the authority of this board has had more of a spotlight on it than the harbor, I'd like someone to point that out to me. I think that this has been accusations that harm us, that harm the taxpayers, that harm the employees. I think it has set up a hostile work and that just, you know, this is all just making the hole deeper, unfortunately. But we were forced to do this because of the accusations made against our CEO that impinged, impugned our CEO's performance. A performance that was evaluated well over a month ago that came out frankly with a very solid recommendation from board members that said, "Well, great job he is doing for us." I think that whenever you have someone who has gotten, not been able to capture, whether it be the RFP in this case, or wasn't an RFP in the case that was mentioned by the speaker, but has not been able to capture that position, then they are, unfortunately, they are unhappy with what they will either find to be flaws in the process. After meeting with Mr. Mormon, I certainly spoke to both Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Krieger and to fully understand what took place, and my comment regarding litigation was a very honest comment. This is a very small harbor staff that has to deal with a very complex leasing issues that have been in place for well over 30 and 40 years, and as we heard this morning, many of them were horribly flawed, fatally flawed in some cases, that have cost money. And so it was a very legitimate comment and that they have been burdened with having to work through all of this solely. I think at no time should any supervisor sitting on this dais in a public arena make a statement about a county employee that puts, again, this board at risk for a hostile workforce, for embarrassing that employee, and I think it's unconscionable that you have behaviors like that on this dais. We are elected to represent with respect, with civil discourse, with professionalism. It is our job to protect the public trust, and I think that there's no question that is the case. And I believe that we have worked very hard to do that in every step of the way on any issues related to the harbor. The harbor is not one supervisory district's sole responsibility. It is owned by all of the taxpayers in this county. And I just, I think to put at risk, again, the board in a variety of ways that this has occurred with the statements that have been made over the last two weeks, if you've got evidence, then bring the evidence forward. If you don't have evidence, then you need to apologize. And the apology is not to this board. The apology isn't to the CEO. The apology is to the leaseholder who has now had his reputation harmed by the statement made. Bring the evidence forward. No one is, you know, if you go to the grand jury, fine. You go to the district attorney, fine. You better have some evidence. I would say, I'd like to make one other comment, and I appreciate that the statement made that just because you disagree on something doesn't necessarily mean that, well, let me say this. We have, we've had this discussion, and we basically have said, "When the majority of the board votes on something, the rest of us should really just let it go, let the process move forward as the majority of the board has directed. That's why you have votes." And to say that there hasn't been an issue that has been just fomenting with this BISC is, there has been, and I really believe that this is still tied to that issue. And now I'm going to do something that is uncomfortable, but I'm going to talk from an email I received from John Flynn on the 19th of October. This followed that closed session discussion when we talked about having three members of the board majority vote, "Let it go." And this email walks through issues with the harbor and from Mr. Flynn's perspective. The part that disturbs me is the closing of it. "I could go on and on, but the East Side will remove all of these impacts." That's referring to the location of the BISC. "I am able politically to get the position of the boating and waterways changed. I absolutely hope and pray that you will join Linda Parks and me in this effort." That borders on a Brown Act violation. "I know that you get irritated with me for going outside my district, but I remind you that I never objected to yours and Judy's involvement on the JJC, which is in my district." That says to me that the BISC is the issue here, and Mr. Flynn will continue to obstruct absolutely everything he can in that harbor on this one issue. And the motion will give us protection as the taxpayers and the policymakers and the firewall that's needed so we don't continue to put the rest of us at risk.
Like to call a question?
Call a question. There's a motion, a second put forward with the amendment that this is not an issue of access to the information, it's an issue of holding meetings and giving, well, it is what it is. And the motion is supported on, is that a four, four one vote?
I abstain.
Four votes and an abstention.
I abstain.
One abstention.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could have another issue related to this, and before I transition to that, I hope that there is a message that goes out to all of our county staff, that the board of supervisors and the CEO will do what we can to protect any staff member who acts professionally and gives their professional advice in spite of how a supervisor may receive that. But with that, I'd like to turn PowerPoint back on. This is my next slide. I have another motion that I think we need to consider, and that is, just last week, we adopted our county administrative manual. And our county administrative manual, policy number 2-3, and it's the protocol for county staff interactions with boards of supervisors. And in that, it says that the county staff should defer to the supervisor whose district the project is located in, should give deference to that supervisor in terms of coordinating communications with others. And I think that I support that policy overall, but I think when it comes to this harbor and the actions that we have out there at this point in time, that it is, would not be appropriate for us to have our staff follow that policy when it comes to the harbor and Supervisor Flynn. The harbor is in Supervisor Flynn's district, but I think that given how contentious he has chosen to make this, given the implications of both having a policy like that and the implications that sometimes have come out, that you need to go to Supervisor Flynn to be able to move something through the harbor, I think that my motion is that the board policy calling for deference to the supervisor in whose district the project resides shall not apply to Supervisor Flynn with regards to the Channel Islands harbor and the related issues. Okay, I should say the Channel Islands harbor and related issues. I think it's important for us to send that clear message to our staff. It's also very important for us to send that clear message to leaseholders and all those other people, that they don't get a read that the supervisor whose district is in is somehow representing what is doable or not doable with the board of supervisors. So that is the second motion that I think is an appropriate parallel to the motion that we just passed.
Well, second, the motion for discussion. I have only a minor question, and that is, would you, since this, you're asking to modify the administrative policy, should it just, should we name the supervisor? Or should it be, because the harbor is a countywide asset? You know, I just don't know that we want to name the supervisor because then would it become an issue at some point in the future if Mr. Flynn is not the supervisor?
Well, I think then I'd think twice about whether that should be the policy or not because I would be, I could be comfortable, I could be comfortable to, I could be comfortable in that situation.
Well, and I guess the reality is, three votes on any day can change the administrative policy, so my second stands.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick.
Your second stand?
Yeah, I have a quick comment to make that will possibly be upsetting, but listen to it. Steve Bennett has had the absolute control of two other supervisors during his tenure in office, vote after vote after vote demonstrate this. So I wrote him a little email about his behavior, which is so bad, especially in closed sessions, how he's patronizing in his comments, but I quoted a great person, and the person said, "Power tends to corrupt. Absolute power corrupts absolutely." And that comes from Lord Acton. In addition to that, I also said to Mr. Bennett, "Lord, to control your expressions, try to adopt something Lord Acton also said," and that is some kind of a moral code in how you treat other people. Thank you.
There's a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion?
Has anybody in this room ever seen me controllable by one person?
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion?
I wasn't sure which of the two that he controls, so, but I didn't know which two you're referring to, that Supervisor Bennett controls.
Depends on where the vote falls.
Yes, it depends on the vote of the day. But you know what? I'm actually going to vote against the motion because Supervisor Flynn was elected by people in that district, and that's why I'm going to object to it.
I'll just make my comment on how I will vote. I will vote on an amendment, or urge you to have an amendment to this when I leave the board, if I should ever leave it. And that is, you can, at that time, delete my name from it, and then it would be protection for those who take my place. But let me say this, this kind of a motion is going to cause the public to come right to me.
There's a motion and a second? So there's no open to the motion? Okay, to amendment to the motion? Okay, then the motion passes three to two. I'll support the motion.
I didn't say I voted against the motion. I simply said, or want to say now, I abstain.
What is your vote, sir? Abstention? Okay, then it's a three, one, one. One opposed, one abstention. Mr. Johnson, what have we done with the discussion of the motions? Mr. Johnson wished you? Sure. Since, sir, you've been the, I'd like to just make a comment that I believe that you work for the taxpayers of this county, just like we work for the taxpayers of this county. You are the CEO, and you have been delegated the authority and role that you have served us so well with. Being the CEO and working for the taxpayers and working for the board of supervisors does not make you a slave, and I appreciate the good work you do.
Thank you. I don't have to assert my 13th Amendment rights on slavery? Okay. One, we probably need to put something in the file, John, because you're going to be here long after we're all gone, and I don't know who's going to remember to take your name out of the administrative manual, but I would like to just say a few things. One, I asked the board this morning, I waived my rights to any kind of privacy and asked that they thing be brought public. that the thing be brought publicly. One of the first things I was asked when I took this job was to create public trust, and the best way you do that is to talk about things openly, and if you make a mistake, you admit to it and you correct the mistake. Uh, if you owe someone an apology, Supervisor Flynn has said he's apologized to just about everybody in the county and said on most of those occasions he needed to. I did not say that, uh, the supervisor needed to. In this case, what I said is, he should either explain and provide the evidence or apologize. Uh, with regard to the email issue, I would submit that, uh, the evidence would show that, uh, the characterization that I don't respond is not accurate. I don't claim to sit there at my computer and respond in lengthy prose on a regular basis, but I do respond to my emails, and I did respond to the supervisor even on the issue he brought up today. Um, and I immediately contacted the harbor, and the matter was taken care of. The issue that wasn't dealt with was apparently the performance of an employee. I did offer to meet with the supervisor and talk about it. Instead, I got an email back, the one that I didn't respond to, which gave me maybe a half dozen or dozen things I was supposed to do, and then I could call and see if I could get an appointment, was kind of the way he characterized it. Uh, with regard to closed sessions, the reason I waived my rights and asked to talk about this publicly is because I sat in the closed session that was characterized as disrespectful and interrupting and the rest of it, and the one I sat in on, I heard ninety-five to ninety-nine percent, uh, conversation from the supervisor explaining to everyone why he was concerned. I didn't see where the disrespect in that situation came from. Uh, with regard to the comment of pandering, Supervisor, I heard that remark sitting right here, went on a number of occasions, when I would say, I start to push the button to explain something, after you had made some kind of statement to the public to explain it, you would say, "Relax, I'm just pandering a little." So I thought maybe you, that was somewhat tongue-in-cheek with you, since I assumed that your use of the expression was meant to be humorous, uh, that, uh, maybe this particular accusation got away from you and that you didn't really want me to spend all that time trying, what I called a wild goose chase. If you look that up, that says chasing something that you can't find, and I had reached a point where I wasn't sure there was anything to be found, so I didn't want to spend more time on it if you were only kidding me. Uh, I apologize if that was offensive. You got the letter at one o'clock on Monday, as quickly as I could get it out, and I now understand from your comments here, uh, that part of my confusion was, is who you were accusing of the, uh, corruption in the harbor, and now I understand it's me. Uh, the, uh, you, you also brought the question up about the mood change of Alamar, so I'm not quite sure on that particular accusation, whether you still believe that that was the motivation for this, uh, sweetheart deal and the payoff. Um, you asked the question, "Where do you go next?" In a deaf ear. I would be more than happy to look into the matter and go to the district attorney and the grand jury with information, but I don't have any, and so that is my request of you is to furnish that. Um, I want to go back to what I had reported to me today. I didn't hear it myself, but supposedly on the radio, it was suggested that you indicated that I was behaving unethically because I had the roles reversed and I worked for you. Admittedly, you and I have known each other for a long time, and I do my very best to serve you, but I actually work for the taxpayers as hired by the board. According to the ethics policy, I have kind of a difficult challenge. It says that I am obligated, uh, to serve the citizens, the electeds, and the employees. Uh, and the reason why that's a bit of a problem sometimes is, as you can tell from the discussion here today, trying to serve all three of those groups is not an easy task. Uh, my, my job is responsible for the implementation of the policy adopted by this board, which I do the best I can at. Uh, I am also clearly spelled out, I am to investigate corruption in the government, which I took very seriously. Uh, I am also responsible to report back and make recommendations, which I have tried to do. If I have inadvertently violated any of the rules or laws, I am more than willing to apologize for that. Um, I think in the best interest of the community and the taxpayers, uh, I would suggest that if it turns out that you are incorrect, that maybe you will join me in our apologies. Uh, I want to read a quote to everybody, because I think it's fairly timely, and some of you may already have, uh, seen a, I believe the picture's called "Good Night and Good Luck." It's about Edward R. Murrow, someone I have a high regard for. This is from Merriam-Webster's dictionary. "The use of tactics involving personal attacks by means of widely publicized indiscriminate allegations, especially on the basis of unsubstantiated charge, is McCarthyism." When we get to a point where we get that close to it, then we should take a step back and we should apologize, because I don't believe anyone, certainly not you Supervisor, intended to do that. But there is no way for me to conduct investigations to disprove negatives, things that didn't happen. If they did happen, I implore you to share what information you have so we can get to the bottom of it. Um, I guess that's probably more than enough.
May I just make one final comment? I want to thank the Chair for conducting this meeting in a very civil manner. Uh, it was easy to, uh, to discuss the things, but at the same time, it's hard to bring up some of these issues. I still have cause, and, um, uh, it's there, I have to proceed with it. I would with this board, but the board almost immediately turned its mind away from this. So I, I have no other choice, but I have to do that. As far as Mr. Johnston is concerned, um, I've been, uh, I've worked with him for thirty years. Uh, this, uh, behavior on his part is simply not in character.
Just like to compliment Mr. Johnson, difficult time, and I think your, your ending quote was very appropriate from, uh, from, uh, Mr. Murrow. Thank you.
Unfortunately, what today did probably was not build a lot of trust from the public in your local government. Um, I hope we'll be able to move on, and I trust that, um, we will work through the remaining issues before us for the better good of the taxpayers of this county and for each and every one of you, and certainly to our, um, our, uh, investors in our harbor. We appreciate the work that you do, and to our county harbor staff, we appreciate the work that you do. We'll move on, board members, to item twenty-seven. Ratification approval of professional services Santa Paula Clinic. Mr. Watson, you're the lucky one.
And aren't you glad you were here today?
Good afternoon. I think it's afternoon now.
Yes, and I'm-
I'm bringing before you today a professional services and operations agreement with Dr. Lisa Salinas for the operation, uh, and management of our new, newly opened Santa Paula West Clinic, which is on Harvard Street, and the soon-to-be-open Santa Paula Hospital Clinic adjacent to the hospital. Uh, Dr. Salinas has agreed to be the medical director of those two facilities. She's been with us for about eight years. She's a family practice practitioner with advanced OB skills. Uh, she's practiced primarily in the Santa Clara Valley in our existing Santa Paula Ha, uh, clinic, and we're thrilled to have her accept this new challenge and responsibility for us. We've asked for ratification because we opened the clinic and began operating on October nineteenth in order to get our provider there, Dr. Janelle Bowle, in the clinic and practicing before she leaves on maternity leave. She's scheduled to out, uh, on Friday. We wanted her in the clinic, seeing patients, uh, and, and established in the community before she leaves for her three-month maternity leave. Uh, and at the same time, Dr. Salinas was in the process of getting her medical corporation started and all the questions and concerns that she had as a part of that.
Me too.
Hence the need for ratification, and, uh, I apologize for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would move the recommended action and also say that the county medical family is growing by leaps and bounds, because Dr. Sportelli, uh, at the Sierra Vista Clinic is, if she hasn't already, is about to give birth to a son. So it seems like we just can't stand in Mother Nature's way with all of our procedures. So in this case, I am very grateful that it is a ratification as well as an approval.
I'd like to second the motion. I, I appreciate that she's willing to step forward and, and to work with us to get this in place, and it's just great progress. Thank you.
Great.
Motion, a second, any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-eight, county clerk and recorder, um, recommendation to appoint directors in lieu of an election. Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. We're happy to be here today to answer any questions that you have concerning this, and also I'd like to bring your attention to the fact that we have representation here from the two districts that are involved with this appointment in lieu. Um, I have some handouts, uh, if I can remember which ones to hand out and not give you my notes, I'll be okay.
I've done that before.
I've also dropped them in the middle of a wedding before, so.
Ooh. Well, it's better than the groom passing out, you know?
The wedding started out in English and ended up in Spanish, so I really don't know if those people are married. It was on a Saturday. Uh, I can't charge them during the week. Um, attached to my response is, uh, a response that I made back in June of two thousand three, uh, bringing your attention to the fact that there are over fifty small districts and school districts that we are contracted with to conduct elections for. And, um, one of the things that we're required to do in accordance with the California Elections Code is to give public notice when there is a vacancy, uh, that needs to be filled in one of these districts. In addition to that, at that time, we also, uh, we file in the newspaper of general circulation, and in the case of the, this, this last one, uh, was the Ventura County Star, and I believe that we, in two thousand three, decided that the Ventura County Star would be the correct, uh, publication to print in for some of these elections, because, um, the people in Oak Park don't read the Ojai Valley News or the Santa Paula Times, and so we put it into a, a newspaper that is distributed in that area. At the same time, we send a copy of that public notice to each of the supervisors and to the district offices where they posted in their office that there is a vacancy. Um, and that is the requirement by law that we must do. Beyond that, we do not advertise any other elect, uh, vacancies unless no incumbent's file, and then the, um, the filing period is extended, and that was the particular case in both the Pleasant Valley and the Saticoy Sanitation District. Um, and that's the reason that we ask for an appointment in lieu of elections, and that is your responsibility to appoint. That is not the responsibility of the elections office. We are mandated to conduct the election if required. In the case of the Oak Park MAC in two thousand four, uh, I believe Supervisor Parks' office did, uh, get quite a few candidates to, uh, sign up for that. That election cost a little over four thousand dollars. Um, that is paid for from special funds in public works that are taken from the taxpayers. It is, uh, tax revenue that pays for that election. An appointment in lieu of an election costs a hundred and fifty dollars. So you can see that taxes from outside the areas and outside these districts help pay for elections in a small district. The Pleasant Valley Water District has approximately forty members. This is a landholder, uh, district, and only landholders can vote. Approximately twenty-five percent of those landholders in the Pleasant Valley Water District are absentee owners. So you can see it's very hard to get people to, if you've only got forty members and there's, uh, only thirty of them that live in the district, it's hard to find five, six, seven, eight people to sit on a board. Um, I don't think eight would work, because you've got to have an odd number, but, um, you'd have to find a bunch of people that would be willing to serve. And they meet three times a year, and the pay that they receive for meeting is only eighty dollars. Uh, right now, that would probably just pay for the gasoline to get there. Couple of years ago, it might have paid for gasoline and dinner out, but it doesn't do it anymore. The Saticoy Sanitation District meets twelve times a year, and their stipend is one hundred dollars per meeting. There are no incumbents on either of those boards that sit on any other board like that. So, um-
I'm not, excuse me.
Yes.
Are you saying that one of the, the incumbents for, like, Saticoy don't sit on other boards?
No, I'm, I'm-
Districts?
I'm saying, let's see what my notes say.
Okay.
Um-
Top of page two.
You don't have the notes I have.
One's in Spanish.
You maybe had dropped those with the, uh, vows from the wedding. I have notes from, uh, back in two thousand two. Well, I guess that's what I was basically saying, but I have-
It does say on the top of your report to us today, no incumbent sitting on either of these districts sit on any other district board, and I know of one incumbent that serves on about four district boards.
Of these, one of the incumbents on one of these boards?
Yes.
Well, in looking at the, uh, um, information that we had, it didn't show up. Um, and so maybe your information is more updated than mine.
Yeah, for example, um, Director Acosta, who's on Saticoy District, is on Ventura Regional Sanitation District and the Executive Committee, and on the Triumphal Sanitation District, and on the Joint Board of the Triumpho and the Los Virginas.
Okay, that's not the information I was given, but I'll take your word for it.
Are all of those elected districts? Ventura isn't, Bjaris isn't?
No, they're, no, they're not elected districts. They're all there by appointment.
Then I guess, I can't really-
But they do serve on the, the district boards.
Okay, then I, I guess I can't comment on that part. Um, I would like to also point out in addition that neither the, uh, Saticoy Sanitation District nor the Pleasant Valley Water District has had an election in over thirty-two years, and that's going all the way back to nineteen seventy-three, uh, election records. So, uh, do you have any questions for, uh, the Sanitation District or the Water District? Because we do have their general managers here.
I, I just, the, what I have is, um, now questions from the memo that you've provided. Um, another statement, and it says that, um, candidates must be registered voters within the district. You know, I know, for example, um, the Caneo Wreck and Park District, there's a member who lives in, like, Valencia or something. They don't live in the Caneo Wreck and Park District, um, and I know, uh, this member from Saticoy District serves on Triumphal Sanitation District, also isn't, uh-
Well, I believe that would be the responsibility of the district rather than the elections office.
I, I was just, what I was suggesting is, I think in cases of special districts, you don't have to live in the district. Maybe it's different with landowner districts like the Pleasant Valley, but I, I don't know if you're familiar with, uh, the requirements for vote, you know, to be a, uh, board member of a special district? If it has to be someone who lives in the district? Is it? Yes, I, County Council has a comment.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Parks, uh, the principal act of each such district determines what the qualifications are, and, uh, in the case of Saticoy Sanitary District, you have to be a registered elector of the district. Ventura Regional San, I believe, does not have an elected board. Those people are appointed. Triumpho is, uh, a combination, uh, and so it really depends upon the principal act of the district.
Thank you, and then, uh, one final question for you. Um, when you stated that the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council election costs the taxpayers four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, isn't it just the taxpayers of Oak Park because it came out of the CSA four funds?
No. Um, the, uh, it, it is all taxpayer funds that pay for it, and how it's divided up is determined by the size of the district and the number of people in it and so forth. So what it could mean is that part of the Oak Park MAC was paid for part of the Ojai MAC, um, or, you know, Ojai residents that, that pay tax- MAC, or, you know, Ojai residents that pay taxes. It's not necessarily just the taxpayers in that district that pay for it. And that's something that's done by the Auditor's Office, is the distribution of the money, I believe, goes to a special fund in Public Works. And they pay for the actual election.
Okay, and I get clarification. Do you know if the CSA IV, which is the...
I don't have that information.
Okay, that was my understanding. It was actually Oak Park that paid for their own election because they have their own assessment area that...
I believe we billed your office for that.
Well, we know where we pass it on to. Okay, thank you for that. Maybe I'll get more information, clarification on that. I guess it's alarming to me that it's thirty-two years and with no election on a board that is an elected board. And I think we need to work better at recruiting individuals. And I was pointing out at the last meeting that I couldn't support reappointing people who didn't even bother to apply for the board. Each year, or each time your term is up, you can fill out papers that you want to be reappointed or up for election, and these people didn't bother to do that, I know, at least the Saticoy Board. And my thought was, well, if they, if I don't appoint them, they're there anyway. And from my understanding, what I've heard, that they are, they remain in place until they're reappointed. If I'm, I know if I'm correct with that, County Council?
With respect to Saticoy Sanitation District, that is correct. The current board members will sit until replacements are qualified and appointed or elected.
What if they resign?
Then the matter will come before the board on a request to fill the vacancy.
And if you appoint for a shorter term, you could run into the same problem of having all incumbents coming up for election at the same time on the same slate.
Well, right now, four of the five are up before us of the Saticoy District. And I did ask you if that is the case, that the incumbents for the district didn't file. Is that correct?
Sometimes it's a case of oversight. I know in the case of Pleasant Valley, two new members that received the papers had to sign when they received the papers. And when they received them, they thought that that was it. They thought they were done with their obligation to refile at that time. And I guess they didn't read it.
Are you saying those are newer members?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, I feel that I'll do what I can in my district to see when spots come open on the elected, small elected boards, that they are reviewed, people have an opportunity to apply for them. But these special districts, and there are, I think you said over fifty?
Yes.
Different districts out there. They really don't have much public openness. People don't know what they do. People generally don't attend their meetings. In this case, the Saticoy Board all voted to put themselves back up, you know. And I just, I feel that it's important to get, let the public have the sunshine of day on these boards. And sitting on one of those little boards, that is particularly strange because it has three appointed people, two elected. And so you never, as a voter of that district, can vote in a majority of the people. And the kinds of decisions that are being made greatly affect the people out in that area. And they were given an opportunity, I brought forward to the board, that the board actually had the ability to make all seats elected by those members in the district. And it was a four-one vote, one-four, I guess. I was the only one voting to say, "Let the people who live in the district vote for the people sitting on the board that determines their water rates." And that I couldn't get any support. And so if a person from Saticoy can sit on that board in Oak Park, I think people out in Oak Park should have a right to sit on the board in Saticoy. But you're telling me that the only way you can sit on the board in Saticoy is if you live there, but in Oak Park, you can live in, you know, anywhere in the entire county and still sit on that board? So it just, it seems like there's some real unfairness involved, particularly out in, what I, in Oak Park, that they don't have the right to have an elected position and instead have an appointed one for a person who doesn't even, you know, bother to fill out an election for, you know, that they want to stay on the board.
I guess that, you know, depends on the policy of the district. But we will continue to send you notifications at vacancies. And if you would like to, you know, get support and to get people to apply for those positions, that's fine. As head of elections, I don't feel that our office can do it because it's a real conflict of interest in recruiting candidates. But we encourage you to do it.
I thank you for that. And, you know, it doesn't discourage me whatsoever to know that it costs $4,000 to hold an election out in Oak Park, where we could have gotten away for $150 if we didn't have candidates because I think it's really important to have that democratic process and have the ability of people to, for elections. You know, again, I think we can do better than what we have. You know, this one board, when I came in, they had a free dinner. They had dinner every time there was a meeting, and the meetings last a half hour. They're going on to Orlando, Florida for conferences, you know. And I just, to me, it was, it's obvious that they need to have more people looking in at the board, more people who live in the area that are paying for that trip to Orlando, knowing about it, and having the ability to vote out people that they don't think should be on the board, and that isn't the case. So anyway, this is, this is part of the frustration, I think, part of, and I think definitely the solution is, is incumbent on us and whatever the county can do to have those positions noticed, whether it's on the front page of our homepage, on our webpage, you know, let people know that there are openings available, and we do what we can to see that that is the case. But I don't have a problem with the Pleasant Valley, but I am not going to support the motion because it doesn't matter one way or the other. They're going to sit on the board and, you know, and they're not going to be elected positions at this point.
Does that mean I no longer have to send you notices then?
I'm only, I'm only one person. No, I appreciate the notice and will do what I can in my district to make sure that we have elections. And I, since I've been on, we've had elections.
And speaking of free meals, Supervisor Bennett, is everyone meeting at Mimi's for lunch? Did you give blood last Friday?
I did give blood last Friday.
And you won one of the gift certificates for Mimi's?
For Mimi's. You just can't get away, can you?
You know, it's a quick digression, but there's a Steve Bennett that went to Katrina. And I got all kinds of credit for that. And now I'm the real Steve Bennett, but by the time I disavowed that and the real Steve Bennett for giving blood, I think people think it's the same Steve Bennett that went to Katrina. So we'll find out how.
Supervisor Flynn had comments on the item before us.
Right. We have staff here today from Pleasant Valley County Water District, but I'm sure that the people that they represent examine what they're doing every day.
I would think so with, you know, the fact that that's 12,000 acres of farmland. Those, the members of that district know what's going on in their water district.
But some of this does kind of sound like, the point that you made, kind of like elections as they were conducted in the Soviet Union.
Are there other questions of Mr. Schmidt at this time?
It's not a question, just a comment.
We have a speaker card. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's do the speaker card.
We have a speaker card.
Good.
Kelly Polk. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board on this item? Mr. Polk, welcome.
Thank you. And thank the board for listening to Saticoy Sanitary District.
Would you step up to the mic a little bit, please, sir? Thank you.
Saticoy has been soured since 1947, a little small community. Although there may not have been an election out there, but they were one of the leaders in the county to form the Sanitation District way back. In 1999, when the Regional Water Quality Control Board brought forth prohibition for effluent discharge from sewage septic tanks into the Four Bay, Saticoy was included in The Board of Directors at Saticoy didn't have much money, but recognized the need for water quality. And we began, and not once did that board back away from hard decisions. We didn't have any money. We had a prohibition to comply with, and we had to get started in order to meet the deadline of one January 2008. We had, we had a limited number of residents in Saticoy in order to build. We found the money. And it went through USDA and the Regional Water, I mean, the State Water Resource Control Board through grants. Under USDA, that was a low-income community grant for part of the treatment plant and then loan for the annexed area. But we had to qualify because the census didn't show Saticoy as being a low-income community. So we went and we challenged that, and we went door-to-door to determine the household income and qualify. The state of California says that if we didn't get the 90 percent drawings, this was in November, if we didn't get the 90 percent drawings in by January the 19th, that the small communities grants that they were going to give us would not be available to us. The directors that you're talking about today made the decision to expedite the design and specifications, and we sent the design engineer and the managing engineer to Sacramento to do that, to make any changes, and we got the money. We began the construction before that. We had 145 acres that was the county's property, not in Saticoy Sanitary District's area. And the, with the cooperation from the county staff and from the directors in Saticoy agreed that we shouldn't have two governmental agencies trying to work on one project. So Saticoy Sanitary District agreed to annex the county area of 145 acres and go ahead and sewer that. And we found the money for that. We went through an annexation and an assessment district, and that was all done in January of that year. We built the facility in two years, two years, and put it online. It not only received three outstanding awards for Project of the Year, but it still receives a commendation from USDA as one of their prized projects. I know that, that the gentleman who sits on our board depends a great deal on staff. Staff will take care of things, and in way of elections, we cannot. And two of our members receiving their packet signed a receipt for that, and they thought they had complied. They didn't. And they were new members. They were new Board of Directors. One of our stabilized directors was moving out of district and didn't file. The other one just goofed. And we're sorry about that. But the Board of Directors, as far as facing difficult decisions, going forward to meet the intent, this Board of Directors met every challenge that was put in front of them. They let staff go to the point where I had $671 left in the Treasury for decision-making before I went into red figures.
Mr. Polk, I'm sorry. Your time is up. Appreciate your comments on the item.
I would, I would hope that you give this favorable consideration. Thank you very much for the...
Thank you, sir.
If I may, certainly, I've looked at some of the bad votes that have been made, and there are certainly good votes that are also made. And I guess what it makes me realize, it doesn't really matter what kind of board member they are and whether they're making good decisions, like they are in Saticoy, or some bad decisions that I've seen elsewhere. The issue is, we have these people that are supposed to be elected that aren't going up for election, and some for decades and decades and decades. And people out there may want a seat on these boards, and it isn't a problem necessarily with the districts, so they certainly have a great way to advertise that they have spots open, like in their water bills and sewer bills and things like that. But I think we need, as a county, to work on making sure that people have the opportunity to run for seats. And in my mind, making sure that we can get all those seats electable if we can, in terms of Triumphal, where you don't have a choice, you have three appointed and only two elected. So that's where I'd like to go. And don't mean to cash disversions on your district and the decisions you make. The concern here is that we have, all over the county, districts that do not go up for election because no one, I think, because no one knows that they have an opportunity to run for it. And some of these are very lucrative, I think, you know, when someone can make $1,000 a month sitting on some of those. And I realize it's, I think, only $80 at Saticoy, it's a couple hundred dollars out in the East County. So I think it's important to let people have the opportunity to run for these seats, and we need to make sure that we can provide that opportunity.
We have another public speaking card, John Matthews.
Good afternoon. My name is John Matthews. I'm General Counsel of Pleasant Valley County Water District. I've served in that position for about 28 years. Just want to take this opportunity to bring a little sunshine to our, to our district since you brought it there. I think some of you are aware of this. Two of your, two of your supervisory, supervisory districts overlie our district. It's 12,000 acres. So when you look at the beautiful green acreage out there, one out of every eight acres that's irrigated in Ventura County is supplied water by our district. We're the largest agricultural retail provider in Ventura County by multiples. We have, as you've heard, approximately 35 to 40 voters in the district. That means like one out of every seven is represented on our, on our board. You recently, we had a resignation from the board, and you, we submitted a name that you approved, and that person again is coming up. Frankly, Supervisor Flynn, it's not the Soviet Union, and you wouldn't want to say that to Tom Vievich, you know that, going out there. These are, these are good guys that are out there trying to do their business and trying to grow crops for everybody. None of these board members sit on other boards, as far as I know. They may sit on private boards, but they don't sit on any other public boards. Frankly, we have to hunt them down like dogs to get them to serve on this board. We have vacancies that occur basically by resignation when they, when they want to do more things with their grandkids or other things, or when, actually, we've had a few people die. But this is a district that I invite all of you to come out and look at. This is a district that you all can be proud of. It's a district that, as I said, you know, one out of every eight acres that you see green in this county is within this district. We provide water at the lowest rate in Ventura County, and we're proud of it. And they're proud of it. They only meet two or three times a year because they don't think they need to meet more than that. I think the situation here is, they thought they were doing something good by saving you some money having to go through an election. That's the same old thing, no good deed goes unpunished. So maybe next time we'll have an election, maybe next time we'll get the guns out and go out and hunt some more people down and see if we can't make them run for the, run for the board or serve on the board. But I would urge your approval of these three fine gentlemen. They're really, they're good guys. They serve our community well. Thanks.
May I just take this opportunity to thank Pleasant Valley Water District for the great cooperation that you did, you have given as a groundwater management agent.
I appreciate that.
I also note that he's the, you're our counsel for Triumphal Sanitation District, where we do have one of the members from Saticoy sitting on that district too.
Right.
Which is, and that's a lot larger district, tens of thousands of voters.
I've heard you, and I know you've made those motions before, that the board become entirely elected.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Bennett comments? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yes, I would like to, one, I applaud and support the effort. You've brought this up multiple times, and it's appropriate to bring this up again. I would, I think it's, we're all going to be better off if we have elections and we don't have these appointed. Well, certainly, if we can't get to the point where we have an election, we should at least be appointing people who filed on time. You know, that's where, you know, I would hope that we would go and make sure that, if nobody else is going to step forward, you know, you're sitting there trying to get everybody in Pleasant Valley, there's not very many people that you can do. At least we want to try to get people who said, I cared enough to apply if there's only going to be the one. I don't know whether it's possible from this Triumpho thing and not having all the intimate details, whether there's possibility there could be a change in state legislation to try to help you accomplish what it is that you're trying to accomplish with that or not.
Well, I did find out, though, the council for Triumpho said you needed state legislation. Our county council said, actually, the board can do it itself. So I brought, before, the board of Triumpho can do it itself. So I brought it to the Triumpho board, and they decided they didn't want to do that. But I would imagine it still stands, and maybe our county council would know if we can look at state legislation. I think you can also do it by initiative, which might be something being considered by residents out there as an opportunity so they can vote for their board members.
But the things that I would point out is, I'm okay with the cost. I mean, this idea that this is going to cost four thousand dollars to have an election versus a hundred and fifty dollars, I think is a small price to pay to have the public trust that these positions don't just sit with the same person all along and nobody knows about it at all. So I would certainly be very comfortable in the fact that, you know, that there's costs. I mean, that's just the price you pay for democracy. I remember when we were talking about whether we were going to fund the election division last year because of special election, et cetera. I remember Mr. Johnson said, look, we're a democracy, we don't have any choice. So funding the election, it was not a problem. I think that the failure is on our part, and that is that it's we here at the board that have been saying, hey, we want to have this. You know, certainly, you know, I've joined in this, we want to have more people. And so, to the extent that we didn't get more people, I take some blame, and I think it's just we got to do a better job. And I know my staff did go out and post a notice at the community room in Saticoy, but we got to do more than that in terms of doing that. However, I would point out that if, for some reason, we can't get candidates, there is some blame on a candidate that doesn't file on time, because that creates a real, so that's going to be a failure that in the future I will take more seriously. Because I think right now we can say, look, this has been going on like this for thirty-two years, and everybody just, you know, I know what happens in these small districts, everybody just doesn't even think about these things, they've just become the habit. So in terms of that. But I did check, because one of the things I've tried to check since our last meeting on this was, could we appoint these people for a shorter period of time so that we could do this and stuff? But the answer from county council that I got was, no, you got to appoint them for their full term. If you don't appoint them, you could get sued for not appointing, you know, the people in this situation. So in this situation, I feel like, you know, our hands are, I don't want to say tied, but I think we should go forward with this. But putting districts on notice that, you know, we at least want the people that we're appointing to have cared enough to apply. And, you know, then some other process after that if for some reason that doesn't happen. And so I would be supportive of this staff recommendation, and at the same time, try to redouble. I think we all should redouble our efforts to try to make sure we get more candidates. I know we've done it in some of our races, and we just have to make sure we do it in all of the races.
Is that a motion?
Yes, so I'll move the recommended action.
Second comment. I agree with what's been said, that we certainly do, in the democratic process, hope that, you know, we have candidates that are out there. You know, we'd love to see three candidates for every one position, et cetera. But I would hope that through this discussion, those that are sitting on boards right now, those particularly that are being mentioned in this staff report, the action that we are taking, that they understand this is a philosophical discussion, at least for me, and not a personal discussion. I think anybody who serves on these small districts, particularly Pleasant Valley, should be commended for serving. And I know that they're generally, those positions are kind of passed around because it's the same people all the time. It's not like an urban neighborhood where people come and go. But I just feel like I want the people who are named here, at least from my perspective, to know that the discussion is really a philosophical one about the democratic process. From my standpoint, has nothing to do with any of these individuals I am perfectly willing to appoint. And then to see how we can help facilitate. But we also have to be very careful because these are independent special districts, and we are not, we don't have authority other than, in most cases, the ability to appoint in lieu of an election. Sometimes, like on our cemetery boards, we have the ability to appoint or recommend appointment, but we have no other authority. So I think that we should, from a philosophical standpoint, always push open positions and that there needs to be people running. But to do so in such a way that we're not seen as interfering with the business and the personalities and personnel of the individual districts. So that's why the second, but I just wanted people to know that I don't have any ill feelings about any of the people who have worked hard and have served over the years on these boards.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any objections?
I don't object. I support, but I want to say that the people that are sitting on those boards and commissions are really straight arrow type people. They do a great job. And to me, they represent the salt of the earth.
Supervisor Park?
I will object. My understanding from speaking with our county council, who I do want to thank, I think I sent him an email last night and got an answer this morning, and we're talking late last night, but that these people will remain in place anyway until reappointed. So I feel that it's kind of moot to do it, and it's my way of objecting to the process. And we certainly can, as board members, put out those press releases and do what we can, but to leave it to the boards to find someone to replace them when they may want to stay on isn't going to necessarily get a lot of outreach.
I'll support the motion and four to one then to move forward with this. I think Supervisor Michael's comments were on target in the sense it's not the individuals, we're speaking of, it's more the process. And I think if the agencies can take away looking at other ways to do outreach, whether it's to put an open election notice in the billings, whether to do more aggressive outreach in the community, these are typically positions that don't bring a lot of glory, are really done with good heart and good public service, and that's well and good. And perhaps through the Association of Special District Association to do a program on, you know, ways to incentivize public participation with some of these special districts would help to do that, too. Okay, that passes four to one then, and we thank you for your work. Supervisor Parks will carry the next item.
Do you want to talk about the item twenty-nine, which is the HAVA funds, being as we're in elections? Okay.
Strong recommendation for support.
Second.
CEO supports this one.
Do you trust him?
Robert, I was the second.
Oh, I get it. Exactly, and we've been here a long, long time today without a break.
All right, so that's item thirty. I heard a second, and if all in favor? Hi.
That was item twenty-nine, Supervisor?
Now, item thirty.
Move item thirty.
I hear a motion.
I will second that I have.
I have it as item twenty-nine.
You're done. We already, we moved and seconded.
I had a vote in a second.
Did you drop your notes again?
I'm going to go to Mimi's or someplace.
Yeah, go to Mimi's and have some lunch.
We're kind of tired of you.
Okay, you had a question on item thirty?
Yeah, for the CEO. Sitting on the retirement board, I also understand that, you know, some of these issues. And I think this report back on the blended rate, I would hope we get that back in ample time to have more than one discussion on what's going on. And if you have anything you'd like to amplify, I would appreciate that. This is good, but I think this discussion is one of those that's going to be necessary to have in the, I won't say the near future, but in the future, in plenty of time to have this discussion about blended rate before the next approval.
Right, we will do that.
So I believe we have a motion?
Yeah, you had a motion and a second.
See no objection. We'll move approval of thirty.
Thank you. Item thirty-one, yes, let's see if we can finish the.
I move thirty-one.
So motion of second on thirty-one.
If I might?
Yes.
If I'm correct, thirty-one is the formula-based distribution of 172 funds. And I had a feeling this would happen if they both got on the same agenda, the long, lengthy morning discussion that we had, and then something as important, I believe, as this item, which points to a lot of hard work and cooperation amongst the entities that are involved. And I would like to personally thank the CEO and his office, and certainly all of the agencies involved in this discussion for the cooperation and for bringing this forward and making it happen. The idea that we're going to change the distribution of 172 funds after the last two years of what I would call blood and bruises, and to do so in a way like this, where we're not being beat upon, I think it's important to call that out. And I think it would be sad to let something as monumental as this issue just kind of like slide through without at least some recognition of all of those who worked hard to bring it forward. So I would move the recommended action, and I would also ask perhaps if the chair would allow the CEO to, oh, you did move, I'll second.
I'll give my second over to Supervisor Michael. No, that's fine.
There is a motion of second on the floor, but I agree with having a little more discussion on this because it's not being done in any other county, frankly. Supervisor Bennett, did you want to comment on it?
My only comment is, I think it's appropriate Supervisor Michael's, was thanking staff for creating sort of the cooperative, cooperation between the department heads. And I just want to recognize that Supervisor Michael's had brought this to us last spring, directing, asking the board to direct the CEO to do this. So thank you for getting this started.
Other comments, board members?
I just think that this is what the intended purpose of Prop 172 was by the voters, and that we're fulfilling that obligation, and it's the right thing to do. It's nice to be able to do that.
Mr. Johnson comments?
Well, I have to reiterate what was said. I mean, this, under normal circumstances, on an average agenda, this would have probably been a, you know, a marquee item.
Exactly.
After the exhaustion of the day, it's not quite the same punch that it would otherwise have. But it is, as Supervisor Park says, you know, doing what we believe the voters had in mind, which was to restore and to fair share distribute this amongst the public safety groups. And I think the fact that all five of the public safety groups are all in support of this indicates that they believe it's also a fair deal. The auditor controller noted to me that she had not gone over certain things and had some concerns like possibly E-RAF three. And I appreciate the concern, the way this has been crafted as a policy, and everyone understands that obviously if the state tax structures change again, then we'll have to take another look. But all of the safety organizations understand that this is that, you know, share the gain, share the pain. When revenues are up, they're going to have more revenue available to divide up, and when revenues are down, they need to divide a smaller pie rather than expecting to take it from mental health or some of the other departments which were hit so hard during the bad years. So I think it's a credit to the fire chief, the firefighters, the sheriff, DA, everybody involved that had a stake in this, and especially to Mr. Womack, Mr. Dursey in my office, who did a lot of the numbers and the negotiating.
Absolutely appreciate the hard work. Those guys are the formula men. They really get it together here and make it work. And this really is, as all of you know, in Orange County, it's a little different action going on down there over this issue. So motion and a second, objection? Hearing no objection. Lots of accolades, lots of good hard work. Passes five oh, thank you. Item thirty-two has been postponed. Item thirty-three, we've done. Item thirty-four.
Madam Chair, I move item thirty-four. And if there's a second, I'd like to make a comment.
It's my letter.
Absolutely. It's your letter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's your letter. This is an important issue, one of the most important issues that we've discussed all day, maybe second to the one I brought up. But if the LA sanitation district gets its way, and this whole thing goes on for thirteen more years, rest assured that the fruit and the crops in the Santa Clara River Valley and the Oxnard Plain are going to be affected by heavy doses of chlorides.
We've had the discussion about the eight-hundred-pound gorilla trying to deal with LA SAN. And just a quick comment, it's been a real hot topic amongst certainly the ag community, and they're to be credited heavily with digging in and doing a lot of the work. They haven't, you know, at times it's hard to get them engaged because they have to worry about their crops, which is their revenue. But they've been very, very good on this one. Rex Laird and Rob Roy have taken a lot of slings and arrows over this discussion. And I'm thrilled that Supervisor Long brought this forward because I think it is critical to the Santa Clara Valley and overall to the county of Ventura. And regional SAN, who can afford it, needs to deal with their chlorides in a different manner than what they've requested. So thank you, Supervisor Long.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm going to be attending that meeting too, and certainly supporting the farmers on this. Will we have an issue of a Brown Act if we have too many supervisors there?
No, we're not casting a vote there. We're just there to speak.
I'm part of the committee, so I will be there.
Okay. Other boards I sat on find if you have three and they're speaking to a subject matter that comes before their board that they can't participate, but that's not an issue.
If you're there, and the only thing you do is publicly discuss an item on the agenda of the board that's meeting, it's not a Brown Act violation for you.
I like that interpretation. Thank you.
You'll take that one, huh?
Well, and as I said in the letter, I intend to be there. I appreciate the good work by Rob Roy and Rex Laird and the Coalition on this. And in reviewing that peer review analysis that was put together, it wasn't convincing in any way whatsoever that what was being requested by LA SAN was going to be no harm, no foul to our Santa Clara Valley. In fact, it clearly called out that there was considerable risk to the avocado crops. So that just immediately puts a huge red light up that says we have to be proactive on this issue and stay at the table on it. I appreciate Mr. Piccola's review of the items two and his input to my office in preparing this information. So motion and a second, and objection?
No objection, just a quick question about the way the letter is signed. It says Kathy Long, Chair Supervisor Third District. And.
That's my cover letter to the board, but the letter.
The letter behind it has.
The letter behind it.
Chair Supervisor Third District.
Okay, what is your request?
Well, I just wondered, shouldn't it just be Chair Ventura County Board Supervisor? I didn't know where they went. Do you identify yourself as Third District or Chair of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors? Just whatever it is. Just wanted to point it out to you.
Okay. Okay, no objection to the action, though?
No.
Thank you. Item thirty-five.
Yes, I would ask the board to support my recommendation to appoint Tyler Riddell, Riddle, I'm sorry. It's been a long day already, and my contacts are foggy, to the El Rancho-Sumee Valley Cemetery Board. It's not an easy board to fill. People kind of aren't real thrilled about serving on cemetery boards. And he has come forward very interested in serving. We have one more appointment after this one, and the board will be very much stronger than it has been in the past. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Madam Chair, I have to point out that the day after Halloween for this to come forward, somebody has to make some cute remark about, aren't people dying to serve on this board?
I tried to avoid making that kind of a remark.
I tried to avoid making that kind of a remark, but you're right. It's, the people they work for are real easy to get along with. How's that?
One thing we know, it's not, one thing we know for sure, it's not political, because no one votes there.
Exactly.
Motion and a second, objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Item thirty-six, El Rio Sewer System. Mr. Pacala.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Reddy Pacala, Water and Sanitation Department, Public Works Agency. Chair Long, my presentation is about five minutes long. I can cut into half, or I can just respond to your questions, however you wish me to address this.
So the board has certainly reviewed the agenda item. Why don't you just make it brief, and we'll ask questions?
Thank you. County is constructing El Rio Sewer System in phases as funding becomes available to assist El Rio residents to comply with the state water board septic tank prohibition. At this time, we do not have any grant funding available to complete the design in the commercial industrial area by General Justice Center. So we are requesting your board to approve $650,000 loan from General Fund. Of the $650,000, we would be using, if you approve the loan, we would be using $200,000 for the design and financial plan for the commercial industrial area by J.J.C. and Montgomery Avenue. The remaining $450,000 will be used to finance sewer connection fee to be paid by Strickland property owners to the City of Oxnard sewer connection fee. And the Strickland acre sewer connection system is under construction right now, and we expect that to be completed in about a month. And in my board package, I am asking your authorization for me to send a letter out, which would, it's an important notice for Strickland Track homeowners, which will explain to them exactly when and how to connect to the sewer system, and also what the cost would be for individual property owner. Our proposal is to send the letter, if you approve it, to all of the Strickland homeowners and the property owners in this month, in the month of November. Following that, we would have a public meeting at the Rio Mesa High School and answer any questions they might have regarding the details of how to connect to the newly constructed sewer system. On October 6, 2005, El Rio MAC has reviewed the draft letter that you have in your package, and they have provided some comments, and we have included our comments in that letter. On October 18, County Financial Planning Committee has approved our recommendation for the General Fund law, and we are requesting that you approve our staff's recommendation. I'll be glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I move the item, but it's...
We have a public speaking card.
Oh, we have a card?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
Let's ask if there are any questions first.
I do have some questions.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I want to try to be clear here, and I'm going to ask Mr. Pratt to come up also, with Mr., you know, both of you to be here. We have, we've had some issues about approximately about the $3 million that we had, that we found out could be, could be used, we thought could, we thought was only restricted to one district and could be used across the board, et cetera. Any of the $3 million somehow indirectly, you know, allocated with this, or is this truly General Fund funds? I'd like to get the concurrence of both of you.
Yeah. Supervisor Bennett, the item you're, the issue you're bringing up is, there's an agreement between the Watership Protection District and County of Ventura to contribute a maximum of $4 million from Watership Protection District to the El Rio project. So far, your board has approved more than $400,000 as a match for EPA grant, and that particular funding will be used to construct sewer system in a different phase of the construction. For the item in front of you, which is the Strickland Acres, none of that money is being used.
Okay. Now, you say there's an agreement between Watership Protection District and the county to use $4 million for this?
That's correct. There was an agreement that was approved by your board on behalf of the Watership Protection District and the County of Ventura to use up to $4 million as a matching or for construction purposes for the El Rio project.
And is this $4 million the same? Mr. Pratt, if you could come up, please? Is this $4 million? I thought we did not, I thought we said we still, I think it's the $3 million, so maybe this $4 million is a different pot of funds. Is that correct? Because the $3 million, I think the board has not, has indicated our position is we don't want to allocate it yet until we finish the capital, the Watership Protection District capital plan.
That's right. As I recall your instructions to us, we were not, we were only using it when we had leveraging opportunities, and that's the way it's been used to date. The three to four million, Mr. Pacala is correct, it was up to four million, but that, the reason we had up to four million was because it depended upon when the developer paid us off for the piece of property that we were buying. The later the developer waited, the more money would be there. They paid us off early, so it's not four million, it's in the range of three million or so, round numbers, that, isn't that what we called the windfall, that went with the proceeds of sale of land to River Park developers? It was a piece of land we paid $5 million for, and just a few years later, I think four, we got $14 million for. And that additional $9 million was what we, we were referring to it as a windfall, but it's been used mostly for capital, and a bit for our new facility, Setico Yard, and then the remainder of the balance, we earmarked for leveraging money for the El Rio project.
So I'm feeling like there's a gray area here in that we earmarked for leveraging the balance of that. I have this strong recollection that we said we haven't allocated that money yet, that it could be used for leveraging, but that...
We were to come back each and every time to your board and ask permission to leverage that money. I think the board formulated that position in response to comments they heard from the City of Ventura and others that day.
And is this, is this the money that's being used, this is the money that's not being used for this, to leverage?
No, it's not, not.
Great, great, okay. My second question for you is, this for Mr. Pacala, I think.
Supervisor Bennett, if I may, I believe the $3 million you're referring to was the special district augmentation fund for the Watership Protection District. That money has not been allocated by your board for El Rio project. What I was referring to you as the $4 million was what Mr. Pratt mentioned as a windfall from the properties located in Zone Two. That's where the distinction between the $3 million and $4 million is.
Great, thank you. The, my next question is, we make these loans, and then we're, then we have a repayment schedule, and it's going to be a very attractive loan, the county interest rates and stuff. What will be the county's recourse if people don't pay the loan back?
These, our recommendation is to collect these loan repayments to sewer service charges, and if somebody did not pay, we have the option of disconnecting the sewer service charge.
So just, this will be part of their sewer charge?
That's correct.
So it'll be part of their monthly sewer charge?
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions? I'd like to call up our public speaker request card, Cheryl Peckham. Been patiently waiting.
Good afternoon, and I'm, you're going to have to apologize, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just going to speak for a while.
Pull the mic down. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of speak from my heart. I'm one of those homeowners in Strickland Track, and that is affected by this mandated, state mandated project for the El Rio project. I realize that this is state mandated, and I know it was unfunded, and I also know the state has put the burden on the county to pay for this. But now with this draft, the burden is now being directed to the homeowners of this, of El Rio and Strickland Track. I have a few comments, and I'm maybe hoping some questions could be asked. If the state is unwilling to pay for this project, can we maybe get an extension on the deadline to allow more funding to be found? And can the board supervisors, you know, propose that request to the state? The other thing is, another question is, our groundwater is tested monthly, daily, weekly, and Rio Mesa High School tests twice a week, and the levels of nitrates based is, it is based on the project. If these, if these nitrates levels are what has projected this project to happen, it's my opinion that we need to look at that, that, those projections again, because if it was truly contaminated, I believe the school would be closed down. I mean, there's no way we would be, as, as, you know, my children go there, went there. I would be very upset if, if, you know, the nitrate levels are, are the reason that the contamination is here. There's a quote in the Star today that I kind of like to speak to. It's by Dana Weishardt. She's the general manager of the United Water Conservation District. She says, "To have old and poorly maintained septic systems is a threat to our groundwater quality. Yes, it's going to cost money to fix it, but it is necessary, it is a necessary expenditure. Everybody in Oxnard Plain depends on the groundwater for their supplies." Well, in my opinion, why should 1,300 people, homeowners, be responsible to pay for this if it's going to affect the whole Oxnard Plain? I know that the rates that you're saying is, is nice, and that, you know, but let's face it, this is a very low-income area, and $1,300 added to our property tax a year would be a huge burden on a lot. It's not going to be monthly, they're adding it to our property tax. If we had a monthly statement, people probably couldn't manage that, but that's not going to happen. You're talking about adding your sewer, this loan, and the loan that maybe will help us actually dissolve our mandated sewers, septics, I'm sorry. And so, I mean, we're talking 1,300, 1,400 dollars extra a year. I personally, I don't have that kind of money to actually, at the moment, I'm a single mom, I don't have that kind of money to budget for. Most of us all live paycheck to paycheck, and I truly believe this is a burden. I, I know and I understand, and I believe in clean water, but at this cost, it's not fair that only a small burden of people have to pay for this funding. I, I'm here actually here just to ask you, as a, as a board, to help secure some more funding. I'm afraid with this approval of this draft, even though it's fair and honest, there is verbiage in there that definitely tells us that we are responsible for the rest of this $30 million. And if, I'm afraid, if this goes through, the continuation and efforts to secure grants and funding will no longer happen, and we're put between a rock and a hard place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments and your patience. Okay, the item is before the board.
Those, I did make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The comments that you make are valid, they're true, and I agree with you. If it comes to the point of having to ask for an extension in time, then it would take a vote by this board to ask the LA Regional Water Quality Board to do that. So that could be an option that we have in the future. This is a really heavy load to place on people. And the purpose for it is, is that this area is not sewered, and it needs to be sewed, that's the order. The LA Water Quality Control Board, including the State Water Board, the mother of the LA Water Board, so to speak. And it's your, your, your residents, and the whole area sits on the Oxnard Four Bay, which is such a sensitive area. And when we have a drought, the nitrate levels go up, to the point in one or two schools in the Rio School District, we have to haul in water. So that's, we're trying to address that issue, but rest assured, we're going to do everything we possibly can to try to get grants to help with this issue, and we're going to continue to do that. The money so far collected is like 9.6 million, and we have probably another 20 million to collect, to try for, to do, to do the effort on.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, objection to the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
No objections. I would just like to, particularly since I see Mr. Coons here, Mr. Pacala, and our CEO, I'd just like to make sure that it's clear, that I'd like to have it called out very clearly and early in the report, as we're tapping into those, the $3 million fund that I referred to in the question, so that we, we don't get surprised and feel like, hey, it's, you know, it happened, and it was, you know, buried on page three, and we didn't catch it, or whatever. So anyway, that's my request to the CEO and to the staff, that we make sure that we call that out very clearly and prominently, early in the, in the report. Thank you.
No objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Item thirty-seven, award of contract Arundel Debris Basin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board supervisors, county executive officer. For the record, my name is Peter Shadey. I'm deputy director in Design and Construction of the Watership Protection District. And I come before you to present to you an award of contract authorization. It's for the Arundel Detention Basin, it's for the some 91,000 yards of debris removal, and at a cost of $3.791 million. And I'll take any questions you have.
Incredible. Are there questions?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second, objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Big project. Correspondence to Gen. item thirty-eight?
Move, receive, and file.
Motion, second, receive and file, hearing no objection, so ordered. We'll now go into closed session. Will there be an announcement?
No, there will not be an announcement.
And I would ask if by next week we could have the clocks adjusted
Yeah, really.
...to the proper time.
Make us nervous here.
It's made me nervous all morning long, and then all of a sudden they went, "Oh, daylight savings time changed." But that would be helpful to the public, I think, as well as to me, who's sitting here staring at the clock.
Let's go have lunch, and a quiet closed session.
It does make you hungrier. Look at that. I think it's too bright. I think it's too funny.